We'll call the January fifteenth city council meeting to order. Commissioner Smith, will you give us the prayer pledge and fact of the day please, sir?
That's an attitude of prayer. Our Father God, we come once again thankful for the minute blessing bestowed upon us. As we come in this hour, Lord, we pray a special prayer for the first responders in California as they respond to the horrific fires that have taken place. We pray, oh God, for those that are affected by the fire as well. We ask for your just protect them as only you can. Blessed now this council meeting tonight that all that we shall do and say we're pleasing and acceptable in your sight. In thy son, Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On January fifteenth, two thousand nine, a potential disaster turns into a great display of skill and composure. When Captain Chesley Burdette Suckenberger, the third, landed safely the plane he was piloting on the New York City Hudson River after a burn strike caused engines to fail. David Patterson, the governor of New York at the time dubbed incident the miracle on the Hudson. Fact of the day.
Okay, let me read the decorum statement, please. Welcome to the public meeting of the city council of the city of Apopka. Please all turn off all cell phones and set them to silent. The city council permits and encourages input and comments by members of the public on all matters which may come before the council for action. If you wish to address the council this afternoon or evening, please make sure you have filled out a card with your contact information and have presented it to the clerk. When called upon, please proceed to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone stating your name, address of record, organization if any, and direct your comments to the city council and not to individual commissioners, staff, or members of the public. The council and the city staff encourages constructive criticism. However, personal attacks are prohibited. Please observe general rules of decorum and civility. Speakers and members of the audience shall refrain from rude or derogatory remarks, shouting, disruptions, reflections as to integrity, slander, abusive comments, profanity, vulgarities, and statements as to personalities. Any violations of these provisions may result in the issuance of verbal warning, including warning for trespass. If violations persist after such warning, violators may be removed from the council chambers. Thank you. Okay. Approval amendments, we've got two amendments, two minutes, one from December fourth and one from December eighteenth. So, got a motion by Commissioner Blasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Check, any changes, no changes to the agenda? Okay, presentation. Well, I don't think she's, she's not coming tonight, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that we have a, an interim city engineer, Diana Emma Navarre, who is, I worked with her when I was at the county for the three years. Also has been under contract consulting with the city of Apopka for several years. And so we're just excited to have her on as an interim. So she will be stepping in to replace Richard Earp on a short, medium, hopefully medium, short to medium term basis. So we're, we're glad to have her on. She, just, just for your record, she served thirty-one years at the county. So very, very, very well versed in, in engineering as well has some great contacts at, still at the city, or excuse me, at the county. So we, we're glad to have her on board. Also, just so you know, we've also got our new engineer will start on Tuesday, Dahoe. And so he will be starting Tuesday. And so we'll hopefully have him at the next council meeting to introduce himself. Okay. Presentation, Chief McKinley.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Just, it's gonna be a brief update. We did meet with the, all the cities and chiefs and a couple of the city managers met with the school board yesterday. We had very constructive conversation. We didn't come to an agreement yet. I think we're headed in the right direction. We left them with a proposal that they are taking up to the superintendent to present to her. And I'm sure we'll see a counter proposal. We haven't set another negotiation date. If we can resolve it in talks, we can maybe not have another one. But I think everybody's optimistic that we're gonna be able to resolve this in the very near future, so.
Any questions? For the chief?
Wasn't, I, I have one question, well, a few questions. Wasn't the, the biggest hurdle was just that it was the term, correct? I think everything else is agreed to is just the term of the contract.
The reimbursement is the biggest debate. The terms, for the most part, are, there was a little bit of language that they wanted to add to it. When we met yesterday, there was a clause that we wanted to put in there also. So there is a little bit of a language change, it's not super significant. It's just to deal with when the contract expires. So we're not in a position where we don't have a contract. This is what we asked to be put in the contract, that when the contract expires, that if we go into the next school year without a contract, then the previous amount will carry over until we have a contract, then that contract will be retro back to the beginning of that school year. That way, we're not sitting here without a contract that's, that's covering everything until we can do a new contract like we currently do. You know, throughout the summer, if we don't have it, we're trying to resolve this issue. School started this year for the first three months, I believe it was, without a contract before we signed the seventy-two thousand dollar a year contract. So that's language. And then they wanted some language that if we wanted to opt out, which I don't think we even really have ever discussed or thought about opting out of the SRO program, that we would give them six months notice so that they would have the opportunity to replace the SROs. So we're in agreement with that because I don't think we've ever brought this situation where we're gonna not have our SROs in our schools. It's just a, a matter of what our reimbursement rate's gonna be to provide those services.
Okay, and then to confirm, we've never removed any SROs from schools and they are still in place as of speak?
We have never removed them. And in two thousand and eighteen, we're the first city in Orange County to put SROs in every one of our schools based on the Marsh-Doman Douglas Act. And we've been there, we've been there ever since.
Understood.
Anybody else?
So we don't, we are working right now without a contract or with a contract?
No, we have a contract for the school year.
Okay.
It goes through up to the summer and it also covers summer school if we have to provide SROs for summer school. I'm confident we'll get this worked out before next school year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, chief, appreciate it. Okay, we've got eleven consent agenda items. Does anybody need to have any of those pulled? If not, look for motion to approve the eleven consent agenda items.
Show move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Eighth Street Replat, Bobby.
Good evening, Bobby Howell, planning manager. For the record, this is the plat for the Eighth Street Replat. Plat proposes creation of four single-family lots ranging in size from point two-two acres to point one-seven acres and a point zero-eight-three acre community park. Property is located in the CRA, the Community Redevelopment Area, and is a CRA project. However, this is just a plat that's being considered tonight. There are no CRA stipulations tied to that. The intent is to redevelop the parcel to allow for the construction of four single-family residences and the development of the park behind the references. Plat is shown on the screen for the record. Access is provided via South Highland Avenue and East, East Eighth Street. Plat is consistent with Florida statute one-seventy-seven plating. And the Development Review Committee recommends approval. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval, the motion, recommended motion this evening is approval. I am the applicant and I'm here for questions.
So we kind of spoke about this in the meeting, my concern regarding this plat. So the park that is gonna be behind the five lots. I'm just concerned with that, with that, I, I don't understand at the point of that park. I think there's already parking the area in regards to the maintenance of that park and just more activity for the community to kind of hang out and engage in other activities. So I just, do we have any type of vision for what that park will look like or?
Radley, you wanna come down and talk about the park?
Good evening, Radley Williams, Park Recreation Director. The, the plan for the park property was to place a small playground on the, on the property, some sidewalks, and potentially an exercise station.
And is the reason why we actually didn't make the lot sizes bigger, I, I just don't?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
The lot size is bigger instead of the park? Is that, was, did we consider that?
I, this, I don't know if that's been considered or not. I kind of took this project over when I became the interim CRA executive director. So I don't know the reason for the four lots, but the four lots would probably be consistent with the surrounding area and their average lot sizes that most builders would probably be looking at.
Because in regards to resale value for that community, it would actually increase the value if the lot sizes were bigger.
I understand.
So I think the ties and best use probably would be for the lot size to be bigger and not to create more green space that the city would have to maintain.
Right, I understand.
Any other questions for either Bobby or Radley?
Well, I think, well, I don't know if this is for Bobby or for, for the rest of the commissioner and council up here is what's, what's our goal here? I mean, what, we're, we're doing this, so what's step two from here, the next step?
Yes.
We have to surplus this at some point, we have to follow the CRA guidelines. But I guess, again, I think that's more so for us. What's our goal? What do we want to see this as? Where, what are our plans for this so we can direct and make sure that it's exactly what our expectations are, if there are expectations? So I just want to hear, I guess, from the rest of the council, where do we want to see this going long-term?
Can, can I jump into one thing and make a correction? This is the property that's, you're looking at the four lots? That's in the CRA?
Sure.
You do not have to surplus it under your surplus ordinance, it only applies to non-CRA property. So there is a process for CRA property by statute, but it's not surplusing.
So we don't need to go through the surplus process, just the CRA process?
Correct.
That's state mandated?
Yes, correct.
Thank you for clarifying that. So good, I, just, I guess for the council, what, what's, is it affordable housing? Are we selling this, we bring this to market rate? What, what's the goal here? Who are we trying to partner with, if anybody? Are we just sending this out in general? Are we doing all four the same developer? Are we doing individual lots? What's, how's this gonna look and what is, what is the process moving forward?
And if we look at the lot sizes, if we look at the lot that's adjacent to, well, across from it, those lot sizes are actually bigger. So we're actually making smaller lots. So it's not actually the same lots. That's, I just think it'll just create, the value add, I just think that space is just unnecessary.
Whatever the pleasure of the board is, I mean, if you wanted to table this, we could go back to the drawing board on those, it's your discretion.
Because we want the community to kind of look cohesive. We put their park in the middle, it just based off of the plot there, it just doesn't.
Yeah, but go back in the middle of the property, so this is the aerial of the property.
Yeah, I want to help you out here.
Wasn't this something that James Hitt had worked on and we had kind of, as a board, a CRA board had agreed on it? On this site plan, do, do we have all that? I mean, I don't have it readily available. This was something that we had worked on with, with James Hitt when he was in charge.
Yeah, I thought it was supposed to be affordable housing.
Can I help? I'm like shaking bait, can I help? No, he, he, here's what we'll, we'll, we'll guide. First of all, the statutory process under one-sixty-three point three-eight-zero is a minimum, you can do longer, but a minimum of a thirty-day notice. And you put out the notice for anyone who's interested in developing the parcel based on your description of what it is you'd like to see there. So this is what y'all are discussing now. And, and that's critical because you can't do the notice without knowing what it is you're wanting. You could put it out there as a blank pallet and say, we don't care what comes in there, bring us your best proposals and we'll figure it out. Or you can say, we're wanting affordable housing, we want a minimum of four lots, we want blah, blah, blah. And the more specific you are, the more you narrow the pool of people who are going to respond. You want to make sure it's broad enough that you catch somebody in the net, but not so small that you catch nobody in the net. If you have in mind, for example, that you would like to see this as a Habitat for Humanity project, I'm doing the exact same thing right now. I literally approved the contract today for Fort Myers. And, and that looks very specific because they have sort of a formulaic way of going about it. They have a way of making sure it stays affordable, they have internal restrictions, they have zero pay mortgages where you earn your, your mortgage payment by staying there longer. If you sell before a certain time, you split the equity. And if you sell before a certain time earlier than that, you get nothing, you know, except the opportunity to move. And so that's one kind of example. If you really want to say, hey, we want to throw it to the winds of what's available in affordable housing and just put some basic parameters, we'd like minimum twelve-hundred square foot homes or whatever it is. We want, you know, single-story or whatever. You put that out there and then the market responds to what you put out there. So the more parameters you put in the notice, the smaller your pool of applicants, but the more specialized, the broader you're casting your net, the more people who will respond. And it's your notice that will determine who responds. Now, in terms of what Bobby needs or what, what I would need to help him prepare the notice, I just need to know what it is you want. And if you already have a design in mind, like what's on this page and some description generally of, you know, we want block construction versus frame. This was an issue, by the way, with, with Habitat for Humanity. I can't remember, but they have a definite, they will only do one. I, I think they prefer block. So if you wanted frame, you're probably not gonna get them or they'll have to negotiate you out of your frame and into their block. There's good things about both, blocks more sturdy, but frame is more economic than, when it comes to energy costs and things of that nature. So all of these things are part of it. And if you really want to, if you've got a real good idea what you want, that's gonna go into your notice that people can respond to appropriately. At the end of the day, and this is important to note too, you all decide what they're going to get in return for their proposal, if you decide to pick one, you can pick none, I've seen that happen. But if, for example, you say, if you give us what we want, we'll give you the property, that's what Fort Myers is doing. Or you can say, we will, you know, give you at, at half price or whatever. The, the less you give, the more the developer's gonna want freedom to do what the developer wants to do. The more you give, the more you control the outcome. And so those, those are just some thoughts to consider as you discuss what it is you want because we're gonna have to put that in a notice to notify the developing public.
Well, based on the lot size that's indicated here, what is the largest home you could put on that lot?
It really depends. I mean, you could do a two-story home. I mean, there really, some may could build a very small homes, some may could build a very large ones, that could go two stories. The height maximum, I think, is thirty-five feet. So you can get a decent-sized home out of that, out of those lots.
Just the land value, I just think is, if we were able to give the community the chance to actually acquire more equity in their property by not having a park there. And I think in the long run, the homeowner would benefit from the value of the property going up than just the green space that the city has to maintain.
Right.
Anybody, any other thoughts? Radley, you got a?
Well, just a reminder, Public Services completed a stormwater project on this property as well, on that north section. I can get this to, there we go.
Maybe?
This section right here was an open drainage ditch that has been since underground piped. So that would be a easement area that would remain.
We could, we could build on that if we wanted to.
Which is fun, we could extend lots that way and just put an easement there.
Yeah, yeah, there'd just be an easement on the, on that portion of the property.
Right, yeah, that's not a problem.
I just, as a homeowner, I wouldn't want a park, a public park directly behind my home where anybody have access to. So I think neither, I mean, none of us would actually want that. So we need to definitely think about the homeowner when we're projecting what this project will look like.
And do we have like a budget for this park if we were to move forward with, in, in this capacity? Is, is this already budgeted, timelines, things like that?
Yeah, there was some funding budgeted in the CRA budget, about a hundred and five thousand dollars, I believe it was.
But we can take that hundred and five thousand dollars divided into four and actually build a better home, quality home.
Yeah, it's just sitting in the CRA budget right now as designated for that pocket park.
We just want quality properties in the community we're building.
And so you don't see any value in having the park there, these are affordable homes?
No, not at all. No, we can make the more homes more affordable by taking a hundred thousand dollars and putting it to the property than a park.
Well, there, there's different, different dollars. The CRA dollars would go toward the park. I mean, we still, because we, we do have the, in, in our, in our CRA, the criteria, we, we can do the impact fee credits based on, you know, we've got that, it's already in the, in the, in the CRA document, so we can do that. I mean, if, if you want, if, if, I don't know how.
So the hundred thousand dollars will only be used for a park?
I believe that's what.
It's in the budget.
No, that's what, that's what it's budgeted for currently in the CRA budget.
Is that accurate? Can we rebudget it for something else? I just, I, this is about, you know.
But what I think too, and, and I, your train of thought absolutely makes sense. It's okay, so what's the goal now, taking that park away? Do we just make the lots longer at the point or do we put a property on that back?
Yeah, absolutely, look at.
Uh, north side there, so making it five?
Pro, yes, possible.
So I, I guess that's, or do we, to the point that's being made, do we, do we make wider lots? And again, because the whole point of the CRA is to take a blighted area, increase property values, increase taxable property values and, and make it an area that everyone benefits from. So I guess, what, how can we maximize that, I guess is the question? Or what is the nexus for only having four lots and the park? Because I, I do think, community-wise, and, and Commissioner Anderson, tell me otherwise, I mean, obviously, I think a park does help the community overall, not those four homes. So I, I agree with you on that. So that's the trade-off is people like parks, you're someone in your backyard.
No.
So totally agree, that's what I'm saying. So that's, it helps the community as a whole. So how do we balance that or how do we kind of work through that?
I think the, I, I just think, I mean, let's just be very clear. In the community that we're trying to clean up, that park would be used probably to just hang out. I mean, there'll just be some swings and I'm just more concerned with that as well. So I think we're trying to clean the community up. I think that the highest and best use would be to have extended larger lives. But that's just my one personal opinion.
So is the lot size or the park? Because I mean, you could, Bobby, correct me if I'm wrong, we could, we could, we could do the plat now and then obviously we could turn that where the park is into another lot. Or do we have, I'm not sure if we've got enough room with the, with the easement? Could we put a, or would we need to, to skinny up?
Right, so if you platted it, you approved the plat tonight, it would be taken to the county for recording. It'd be recorded in the public records, the lots would be legal lots of record. And the park would be a legal park. If you wanted to change it, you'd have to go back and replat it then, would have to go back through the process again. So one option would be to maybe just table this, go back to the drawing board and look at some other options. Or the council kind of vote to approve the plat and then we could come back at a replat another date.
I, I mean, my thought on the, the park is, when you look around where we have city parks, we got the closest one would be going west would be Alonso Williams Park. Going north would be Kelvin Nelson Park. Or, or the Orange County one. And then where's the, is there any other, Radley, could you think of any other parks? I mean, it's, it's a, it, I think it needs a park, but I, I mean, I'm not gonna stand in the way of.
Will there be a fence or something?
We could, we could mandate a fence, absolutely.
We just don't want, just for properties thrown up in a swing set on the back, you know?
I think we could put, you know, make that as a condition of the, put a vinyl fence in the back, something that'll last a long time.
Right, and usually most homeowners, the first thing they do is put a fence up, you know? They say fences make great neighbors.
More so affordable homes, so fences are very expensive. So we want to put that on this, on the homeowner to put their fence up.
Right, we could, that, we could be a part of our, I mean, and, and I think the Commissioner Nestor's point, the, the Real Estate Foundation, the Realtors Foundation had reached out to me about some kind of a builder blitz, which we hadn't got any farther than, obviously we gotta get farther into the, into this process before they want to step in. But they, they talked like they, they're willing to, to put some dollars toward it, toward these, these homes. And I think we could get, if we did a builder blitz and got some, some national hype on it, I think we could get these three-D builders or, you know, prefab homes. Maybe they would discount their, their, these homes for the, the recognition of, of this, this builder blitz. So that's always possible. I mean, obviously you don't have to go that way. But the one thing, Cliff, on, on Habitat, Habitat is, is frame, which I've, I've never been a frame guy.
I knew they were one or the other, I just couldn't remember which one.
The other homes in partnership is block, which I'm a block guy. I mean, I, I'm, obviously as an insurance agent, you know, block insurance rates are lower. Yeah, you pay a little bit more, but I think long run it's cheaper. And if you don't paint a house that's, that's, that's block, it'll still be there fifty years from now. If you don't paint a frame house fifty years, it'll be, be.
It won't be there.
It won't be there. So anyway, that just is.
I just knew that there was one way or the other, I just couldn't remember which way it went.
Yeah, so, so what, what's the puzzle for it?
Is, is there a reason why we're leaving the open space at the end of lot four there?
Yes, because of the easement of the, of the pipe. We can, you can run across it, but you can't put a building on it. So we could extend that lot.
At the end, at the end of lot four?
Four.
Okay, wait, to the east of it.
I, I thought the, I thought the pipe ran the other way.
It, it runs, it goes east and west. And, and it goes, then it goes, also goes, and also goes north.
So it goes north though?
There's like a T there.
Yes, correct. The elbow is right at the, at the end of lot, if that's lot four, I can't.
And if you see at the top, the north side of that too, that's why our property runs, what is that, a ten-foot wide patch of land runs up there as well?
That's the easement for the. Commissioner Anderson, are you comfortable or?
I'm comfortable, I just, I, I just want to just make sure that we're just not throwing up four houses in.
Okay, all right, well, let's, we'll open it up for anybody from the public, what should speak on this one?
Ace Woodham, that was the old Orange County Maintenance Farm area. That ditch is still, it runs from that, one part is covered up, that's open over to Seventh Street, I believe that is. It's closed in now, all the way, north and south.
Not, not all the way.
That's what I'm talking about, the park runs north. But anyway, well, I'm trying, I would prefer going to Habitat for Humanity. I'm tired of us giving our property or laying the weight to builders here as profiting off of the taxpayers. It's a little ridiculous. You'll build low income, that's a wide-open statement, low income. What is low income now? Does anybody, can, can you define it? What's the price range? Habitat for Humanity at least gets the built, the homeowner involved in the building of their home. It gives them some pride. And I just think giving this to local builders to put money in their pot, free land, to build a home on and profit off of it while the taxpayer seeks back and pays for it is a little asinine to me. That's my opinion, but I would prefer going to Habitat for Humanity. That's my opinion, but I would prefer going to Habitat for Humanity. And don't forget, we still got a homeless situation, we keep giving land away, y'all better figure out what you're gonna do with these people. They're grazing out in our, in our parks, in our sidewalks and storefronts now, and y'all gonna keep giving land away.
Anybody else from the public who should speak on this one?
Sylvester Hall, uh, Happy New Year, everybody. Uh, one thing I wanted to say with this, I kinda echo what Ace is saying, it's like we just giving away land. Heck, I can, I can hire a contractor to come build on the land, if you're gonna give it to me, and I'll work with you and I'll get whatever we want built, built there. So when we give away this land, who we giving it to? And then when we talking about the community overall? Now imagine a park, our teens don't have nowhere to go. Kids really don't have nowhere to play because nowadays we building homes with no, no lot. You can reach out and touch your neighbor. So, I agree when you look at putting a park there, you do your pros and cons, but who cares about the family anymore? I mean, it's bad enough to be in a poverty-stricken area where crime is, 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 uh, is out of the roof and the kids have nowhere to go and play. They stay locked up in a house all day. So we really need to look at these things, and when we building homes, yeah, frame is out of the question, should be completely blocked. And another thing is, are we building the community up for future poverty? Are we building it up for future prosperity? Because when you're building a home nowadays, you need three, three, minimum three bedrooms and a minimum two baths, and you need a two-car garage. If you're thinking about a family, a man and a wife, most of the time they need two cars. That single-car garage and that carport crap, that don't work. And when we building, we building for the future. We building for families, we building for the kids. So keep all that in mind when we doing this and we're just not throwing something out there, and it is what it is. Especially when it comes to poverty-stricken communities. If we wanna raise a park to the area where people wanna come and live, where it, it's not just come in, pick up something to eat and, and get out of a park, let's start with the homes that we build from here on out, let's make it something that everybody will wanna come here and live in. I have a daughter, three daughters. Married. Both make good income. But if you think about it now, to rent a decent place is two thousand dollars a month, just for a decent place. You look at car insurance, you look at homeowners insurance, you look at life insurance, you look at health insurance. That's almost three to four thousand dollars for a, a young couple. So how do we think, are, are, are young people supposed to come out and prosper in our world, and we already setting them up for challenges if they try to get out and, and live that American dream? So when you doing these things, think about the big picture. And think about what really matters, it's, it's, it's our people, the residents. People, people, people is our greatest resource. People, people, people is our greatest resource, not large corporations and, and big high-tech companies, it's the people, thank you.
Anybody else?
Leroy Bell, you got a nice smile there, man. Uh, I wanna echo what, uh, Ace said. The homeless. And this give us a chance to go back and find that hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars that was earmarked for the homeless. You remember at one time that you guys were talking about a spot up by the old city barn that you were gonna give to someone to put there for a shelter. You was talking about at first buying a building from, I think it was Lamar Hughler, but he didn't accept the price. A hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars would go a long ways if you go back and take it back out of the slush fund where you hid it and use something for the homeless. This way, you won't have a problem with the residents talking about the homeless in the parks interfering with the kids and the residents. You can get a chance to recover the fifty-seven thousand dollars for the COVID test there. If you remember last meet night, you didn't remember nothing about it, not, but if you had went to Facebook, we found it and put it up when you and Chief Wollam, and now Chief Sanchea was out in front of the city hall. Come on down, let's find that money and stop giving the land away, and let's do something for the homeless.
Anybody else? Okay, I will close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the replat for Eighth Street.
I got one more question, is this, is this a Brownfield site? For some reason, it's sticking in my head that it was, or it's close to one. I don't believe it is, I could double-check and see.
I think it was, but I think, I don't think it is anymore.
Yeah, I would have to confirm that. Because that, I would just be interested to see what kind of issues that may come up with down the road for residents with insurance, mortgages, things like that, that we may wanna get ahead of before making this affordable. Just get ahead of that and understand that. I mean, it's obviously the pleasure of the board, what, what I would recommend is that we table this and bring this back up at our next CRA meeting. Have our CRA dive in and say, go through some pros and cons, see how we can fit another lot in there, figure out, uh, maybe wider lots as well, kind of figure out and really refine this, um, to what feedback we've gotten so far up here, so I would move that we table this until the next CRA meeting.
Got a motion to table?
Second.
Yes, motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries and has a sleep.
Can we find the original paperwork that James worked on for this property?
I'll go through the archives and see what I can find.
Would you send us each the link, because I do remember he worked on this.
Yep. Attorney Shepherd, you'd made a, a comment about a municipality that you're working with right now, where they had a really unique program of just incentives and things like that, some, some metrics and thresholds, are you able to send us kind of that framework, just so we can see what that looks like?
Yeah, it, it, it's what I, to be clear, what has happened is, they had similar to you, only bigger, twenty-six homes, and their successful bidder was Habitat for Humanity of Lee and Hendry Counties, I think it is. And that's why I knew that there, I couldn't remember which way they preferred, but I knew it was either block or frame and we, whatever they preferred, which I think was they prefer frame and we wanted block, but to pick them, we had to go with frame. And the, at the end of the day, the contract that I was concerned about is, we want affordable housing, and I had put in a provision to preserve the property for, you know, twenty-five years as affordable housing and get a first ride or a few various other things, they struck all that, but they said, don't worry, here's how we do it, and then they laid out, they've got some de- they've got a deed restriction, they've got, oh, the way they do the mortgages, the way the mortgages are, are paid down. There's not an interest rate, it's a zero interest rate, but they do take a payment based on no more than thirty percent of the person's income, and like interest, even though it's zero percent, the first monies go back to Habitat, and as they go further into the mortgage, the monies then go more towards a hundred percent going to paying off the debt. And if they sell it or resell it within a certain period of time, depending on how far along the line is, they either split the proceeds of any equity with Habitat, which gets poured back into, plus Habitat gets to refuse a purchase if they think it's being purchased for the wrong reasons by a speculator, blah, 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 blah. So there's a whole lot of protections, Habitat does that for you, you just have to make sure it's blended into your contract.
I understand, and I think that contract you're referencing, I would still like to see, just so we maybe can mimic that.
Yeah, I can get it for you, and it, they sent me the attachments today, so I, that's why I'm familiar with it.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Okay, next up, utility upsizing agreement, Willow Run, Lynn Brooks.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Lynn Brooks, Water Resource Manager. The business outing before you this evening is the utility upsizing agreement of Willow Run. The request is to authorize execution of the upsizing agreement. In summary, M.I. Homes of Orlando LLC Willow Run projects intends to construct eight hundred and fifty-one liional feet of sixteen-inch water main and six hundred and seventy-two foot of liinal feet of sixteen-inch sanitary force main along Plymouth-Sorrento Road from north of Appy Lane to the Willow Run subdivision. This project only requires an eight-inch water main and a six-inch sanitary force main to serve their project. But the city's requesting a sixteen-inch water main and a sixteen-inch sanitary force main instead, because the city's water and sanitary force main master plan shows that these larger sizes will be needed in the future to serve future development in this region. The utility upsize agreement will reimburse M.I. Homes of Orlando LLC for the materials only for cost difference between the smaller water and the sanitary force mains that is needed for this project and the, and the larger, larger for the city has, that has, the city has requested because they're needed, again, as I said, to serve development in this region. The engineer's opinion of probable cost is included in Exhibit C of your packets that you should have before you this evening, which is for eighty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight, eighty-nine. The recommended motion is to authorize execution of the utility upsizing agreement at Willow Run.
Any questions for Lynn Brooks? Anybody from the public who should speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the utility upsizing agreement for Willow Run.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries and has a sleep. Next up, changes to the residential yard waste and bulky waste collection program, Josh.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Josh Robinson, Public Services. Tonight I wanted to provide you a, um, possible change that if, uh, if it interests you, I could bring back at a later date a more fully developed plan. Our bulky service, um, in my mind takes up a lot of, or is a, a, a lot of additional costs that serves a fairly small segment of the population here. The, what we would prefer to get is the picture on the left, a little more readily-prepared items for more efficient collection. What we often get is the picture on the right, mixed waste, poorly prepared, takes a long time to collect and costs extra money. A lot of those larger piles require a claw truck, it's an ongoing thing, driver errors, we ended up clipping the yard, doing damage there that has to be repaired. Uh, we run across things like this, whole trees being removed, just pushed to the curb, stacked around utilities, hydrants, transformers. Uh, move outs where people just literally move out and throw everything at the curb. And what I would propose we do is start to use, um, limit the pickup for the average homeowner to ten bags, cans, or bundles that are easily and efficiently removed. And for larger amounts, utilize, uh, a contractor bag, waste management, some of the haulers u- utilize this. It's a bag that can hold one and a half cubic yards, and then the claw truck just picks it up from the handles and drops it in the truck, so no damage to the yard, quick, efficient. And, so yeah, um, utilizing the, either a more efficient collection or the bag, uh, it, it can help us control costs without providing, I mean, we're, we're actually compete with local debris haulers. You know, they, they charge six hundred and fifty dollars a truckload, we're charging a hundred and fifty, you know, it's, we don't wanna be compete with local business for that. Folks that do a lot of major work, tree removals, entire communities doing, raising the canopy, I feel like are, are getting, getting some pretty cheap service on the back of the entire, uh, rate payer, so I, I think it'd just be fairer, it'd be more efficient. It's a way to, I mean, even though on one hand it looks like we're raising prices, it would actually help to contain price overall for the average, uh, user, so, um... So yeah, if you, uh, have interest in me taking this further, I'd be glad to develop a, a more detailed plan and bring it back at a later date.
Questions for Josh?
So are you talking about providing these bags to homeowners?
We would provide, um, I've, I've seen communities that have like Publix or Ace Hardware would sell the bags, and we would, we would, you know, put part of our administrative cost in the bag, and then we charge on top of the cost for that bag X amount for the actual disposal and the collection service.
So when our homeowners have bulky, um, garbage to throw out, which is usually furniture and that, do they have to call our public services to let you know that's what they're putting out the curb?
We encourage it, but, we encourage it, but not necessarily, we, we run the whole city and, and collect what's out.
So if the truck goes by and it sees this bulky trash and you realize you can't pick it up, do you contact the resident? How, how does that work? Or do you automatically pick it up?
We automatically pick it up, yes, and we, and we attach the, for over a certain amount, we attach the charge to the utility bill with photographs of the, of the waste.
And the homeowner, does it, does it, does the homeowner get charged? They do, once you pick it up, they get, they get charged.
Right.
So you're talking about being able to provide?
So what I'm talking about, they get charged, but they get charged very minimally for, I mean, literally three truckloads, you could fill this whole auditorium, you know, from one location. And so what I'm talking about is providing service for the average user at a fair rate, for those that need much more service, they either contract to a private company to do that, or the city charges them a more, uh, competitive rate.
So how would that work though?
So by, by limiting the size, the amount of material that goes into that bag, the large contractor bag, and we would still collect the, the big gnarly piles like on the first slide, but it would be a more competitive rate, it'd be, you know, more in line with what a commercial, uh, contractor would charge.
Okay. Any other questions for Josh?
Just a few, few questions here, and I appreciate you meeting me during my, um, agenda review as well. The, and I should have asked this then, the, are there any other municipalities that we're kinda, that we would mimic this system off of, or is we're just kinda doing this ourselves?
Well, uh, yeah, like, for instance, O- Orange County, I think they limit it to three cubic yards. So in certain municipalities that, uh, that, that don't provide necessarily that service or that level of service, then yes, I've seen waste management and some of the other haulers that actually, that picture is actually a waste management, it's branded and everything, it's got WM on it. You, you can buy them at, uh, Home Depot.
Sure.
Um, now, as far as that, this exact model, I can't think of any that uses this exactly, but I do know that most communities do not provide the level of bulky pickup, and when I say bulky, I don't mean just furniture, but it could be a pile of yard trash that's three truckloads. They don't, they don't provide that kind of service, you know, it's usually limited to...
We're the most flexible on that front, I know that for sure.
We're very flexible.
Especially compared to Orange County and the consistency of it, so this, this program is meant to build efficiencies, save money overall, so we don't have to increase rates, those that are using more, pay more, those are using less, don't have to pay more.
Exactly, and, and to encourage, uh, the resident to do a little more effort to prepare it. They're already bringing it to the curb, we're just asking for a little more to prepare it, so it's more efficient, we're not like wasting time unnecessarily raising the rates.
Absolutely, okay, thank you.
And even the large green bag, they can purchase at Home Depot?
Uh, yes, certainly you can with waste management, we, we would brand our own, we'd do one with our logo and, and arrange that, that sale with, at Home Depot, I'm thinking Ace. We, maybe sell them at UB as well, they could pick them up there. But as far as the details, I, I can, if, if you're interested in this, I'll, I'll, I'll really get it spelled out for you, so...
So you have an idea of the cost of that bag?
Uh, right now, if you, I think it's about thirty dollars, and then I think waste management charges you about a hundred and eighty, then to come pick it up and haul it off. And then I think waste management charges you about a hundred and eighty, then to come pick it up and haul it off.
Anybody else? Okay. Anybody from the public which should speak on this one?
Ace Woodham, I've got to disagree with this gentleman a little bit. I've got yard trash out there, so I got three wheelbarrow loads of just dead limbs and stuff being picked up. I had to pay someone because of my health, I can't get around and pick it up. Got it out to the road, it's been there for two weeks now, truck came by. And if I'm not mistaken, I think that one with the fire hydrant is probably from the storm time we got. And the city of Apopka probably got some money from, from FEMA to help on the storm damage pickup. I mean, I'm not denying there is issues, I've seen a lot of places that the fridge, people got refrigerators and sofas and stuff and move outs out there. And I can understand an extra charge for that. But a lot of times them are renters and a homeowner who was renting, I mean, owns homes, won't have to pay for what the renters left behind. But this is an issue that's ongoing here in Apopka, here we go, and again, adding something to the taxpayers. Apopka, we've never had issues like this in the past till this administration has taken over. We clean our yards, take pride in our homes, keep our streets clean. Truck come by and picks it up and hauls it off. Now you want to start taxing, charges more for a truck that we pay for, we paying the salary for, and then you're going to charge us extra to have your yard trash hauled off. I disagree with it. Now, if it's a big mess, I can understand, maybe negotiate with the homeowner. But the waste management bag he's talking about at Home Depot is around thirty dollars, twenty-nine dollars and something, thirty bucks. And then you call Waste Management, they'll, after you get it filled up, it sits by the road. And then they'll send a truck by with a hook on it, pick the whole bag up and haul it off. I have no problem with that, but on a normal, regular yard trash days, debris and stuff, I can't see chart, we mean, we're paying extra money for a grappling hook already, the city's paid for that on these trucks. And if it takes that man to crawl out of front seat of that truck and go back there to the hydro level, levelers, arms, and it worked bad, and they won't charge us extra because he got to crawl out of his front seat and do it, that's ridiculous. Normal circumstance, our yard trash should be picked up, we already paid for it, it's on our water bill, and that's why I said it.
Anybody from, else from the public which should speak on this one?
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Walling Hills Lane. I, I've been blessed or cursed with living in a lot of different areas across the country. This is the first place where you don't have to pay extra for appliances or furniture when it's put out. This is the first place where you don't have to tie up your debris. If you don't tie it up, it sits there until you do. Uh, the aspect of number of bags, uh, I had sixteen bags of small stuff at the last hurricane in doing it, and I think you modify some of that, but the aspect of working it. I also know that there's a home, uh, right across the street from, uh, Apopka Middle School that has twenty or more bags every week. Their yard's about the size of twice the size of this room because he has a service and collects it because, well, I'd have to pay for it at the dump, so I'm going to bring it here because it's free from the city. So I'm sure there's probably areas that some of your drivers could identify that the debris doesn't match up. But I think it's something we ought to be looking at, we want to cover the cost, we do pay a cost, we have a great group of people that provide the service and, uh, they shouldn't have to get out of the truck and grab everything, those bundling things makes a big difference, thank you.
Anybody else?
Sylvester Hall. Uh, some of those pictures speak for themselves. When you're talking about the, the makeup of a community, when you're driving through and you see trash everywhere. So, I agree, we need to do something, but we need to sit down and take a good look at it. Because I, I support you on some of those things, but we need to sit down and take a good look at it and make sure that we're not like Ace safe, uh, charging the taxpayers extra. The way it's set up now, if I heard correctly, when you have a home that violates certain policy, you take a picture and you, you charge them accordingly. If we stick to that, I think that'll cure a lot of ills. When people put stuff out there and it's blown everywhere, just take the pictures and, and, and file them for it. I think that'll stop a lot of people from just throwing stuff out there because sometime when you see, we know trash come, where in my area, it comes every Tuesday to pick up their yard waste. And so you may see people set stuff out on the weekend, so it's sitting out there all weekend and then until Tuesday, sore hours. So if we have some foul weather, now it's flying over in the neighbor's yard and everybody else's yard. So if we just do a good job of patrolling, taking pictures of the people that violate that and charge them accordingly, I think it'll go a long way in correcting that, thank you.
Anybody else? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the changes to the residential yard waste and bulky waste collection program.
And this is just, and just, it's in concept, so you're going to be bringing back, this doesn't approve anything, nothing changes. It's just, we're open to the idea, you'll come back with more specific parameters, and then from there, we officially say yes or no.
Correct, yeah, if you, if you agree with the concept, then I'll bring you the final plan, which you can look at.
Understood. Any motion?
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Bradley Williams, special events license agreement.
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners, Bradley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. I've got a couple of event, uh, requests here tonight for your consideration. First one up is a special event license agreement for the Dark, uh, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Parade. The Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Parade is a longstanding annual event organized by the South Apopka Ministerial Alliance in partnership with the City of Apopka. This year's parade will be the sixteenth annual running of the parade. Uh, to formalize this event with our event partnership under the current special event license, uh, staff recommending authorizing this special event license agreement with the South Apopka Ministerial Alliance to continue this annual event for twenty-four, or, sorry, for twenty-five and twenty-six. These, uh, typical one-year renewals, uh, beyond that. Uh, and this license agreement is the same format we've brought forth on the prior events.
Any questions for Bradley?
I answered a couple of questions, and this is more conceptual, it's not specific to this event, it just happens to be in front of me right now. Is that the license agreement that we have in place right now is what we're using, we're trying to apply everywhere equally. The problem is the one that we see, or that we're approving right now, is not filled out, I don't have any data, start date, end date, anything like that, there's some provisions in here that also say twenty days from the event, or whatever it may be. So we're not setting our partners up for success if we're approving these a week, less than a week before the event, so. How can we, I guess, approve the license agreement that's not filled out, that I don't know when the expiration date is, things like that?
Yes, my apologies, uh, Commissioner, what should have attended that staff report as well is a special event permit application that was submitted for this event, which has been submitted for this event every year, that has all those details pertaining to what the event, uh, entails. And that next item that I'm coming forth with, the street closure, does have that attached to it.
So I, that information's in there, it's, again, and it's not specific to this event, because we, we've approved other ones that we don't have any information in, so that's, I guess, my issue, is I don't know what the expiration date of this is.
Okay, yeah, so the, the, the policy or practice right now is to take this through the special event application process still, to gather all that information, and it accompanies that special event permit license agreement. You're asking for it to be formalized into that agreement, is, is my understanding. So if you'd like, we could begin attaching that as the addendum to the agreement? If that would make you more, if that would make more sense for you?
Well, just understanding, because it says, page one of it, whereas the licensee, blank, so who are we contracting with?
Yeah, sorry, the South, in this case, correct, you want it, you want it completely filled out?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, that's my point, again, it's not specific to this event, it just happens to be in front of me right now, we've agreed, or, uh, approved these in the past, and we, we don't know what we're approving.
Yeah, my apologies, the, I loaded, I must have loaded the, the wrong one for you there.
So have they already, they've approved the, the?
Correct, we have their, we have their signed side of it. Once approved tonight, we'd have-
We'll counter sign.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Again, my apologies on that.
No, and I guess my ask is moving forward that we have all that information filled out, so we know what we're approving, the only thing missing is signatures.
Correct, I will make sure that happens moving forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Bradley? Anybody from the public which should speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to-
At sixty-three, it's amazing what you can do when you don't think about it. I just dropped to my knees, if I tried to do that on a regular day, I have a trouble getting up. So it's just amazing what, what the body can do when you don't think about it. When we reviewing the, excuse me Sylvester, when we're reviewing the packet that you guys placed online, and we have a copy of the license agreement, and it's not filled out, these are the things that cause this concern. And we all are quote-unquote professionals, and we know these things should be filled out in their entirety. And so, when we come up here and we bring you up here and they ain't filled out, I, I, I respect you better than that, so it should be done just like everything else is done in the package, so. Just stay consistent, it's twenty-twenty-five, you know, this is going to be a great year, uh, for everybody, and, uh, it's going to be a great year for me. So when we see things like this, and we put the packet out there for the people, let's just make sure we put our best foot forward and make sure everything, we cross all our uh, Ts and we dot our highs, thank you.
Leroy Bell, uh, uh, yes, this is troubling to, uh, this just, it, it, this didn't just happen tonight with this event that you guys finna approve now. This happened last meeting night. And the citizens is sick and tired of this administration doing this. Last meeting night, it was, let's approve seventy-five thousand dollars. Just in case we need it, we need to go ahead and approve it now, because when we need it, it might not be in the budget. Man, this, come on. We can do better than this. If you're gonna, if you're gonna bring something before the city council that gonna affect the citizens, uh, I'm down with the Martin Luther King Parade and everything. I think it should be opened up to both sides of the community, not just to the black side. Like the Christmas, Christmas ornament went all the way across the city and stopped right here on Ninth Street. It didn't go down in the black neighborhood, but will you stop? Stop approving stuff, and once you approve it, then when it come down, you pistol in the end, and anything goes.
Anybody else? Not, look for a motion to approve the special event license agreement for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Parade. So, got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, special events request, road closure.
This, uh, request goes in hand with the prior request, uh, it's for the road closures for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Parade. Road closures are the same as in years past, uh, request for the date of January twentieth, twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. And it includes Central Avenue from Apopka Community Center, north on Station Street, south on Marvin C. Sanders Avenue to Thirteenth Street between the hours of, uh, twelve PM and four PM. The permit application has been reviewed by city staff. Uh, the DRC recommended unanimous approval at their special event permit meeting on December eighteenth. And we're asking for, um, approval tonight.
Any questions for Bradley? Anybody from the public which should speak on this one?
I just have a quick question, so because this partnership, we're providing the police services, correct?
A similar service to how we provide for the Christmas Day Parade, or Christmas Parade.
For this, because it's when, within CRA, is that coming out of those funds, or I guess, is this off-duty officers?
Uh, I have to leave that to-
Are they all on duty?
Police.
Please come up here so everyone can hear it.
It'll be handled as it has been in years past, and just as we handle the parade, it'll be, most of it'll be overtime, um, to cover it because of our staffing levels, uh, if we have a large squad out that day. Um, remember that half of it's covered by the sheriff's office also, because half of it's in unincorporated Orange County, so we work with them uh, to cover the part in unincorporated Orange County. But the parts that are within the city limits, we do cover.
Okay, thank you, I was just trying to figure out what pool that was coming from.
All right.
The people that's handling this, uh, event, is it the South Apopka Ministerial Alliance? Now, the chief just got up there and said, uh, they're going to handle the overtime, so, uh, portion of overtime? That's fine, or whatever, but it seems to me, I remember, uh, uh, about a year or so back, a couple of years back, in order for a person to be a part of this parade, that they have to go and apply to be a part of this parade through the Ministerial Alliance, correct? And, well, you don't have to answer.
Same as, as the Christmas Parade, they have to go through Sartoma to get on.
Yeah, but then, but then, on this side, it's a fee that you have to pay, it's a fee for application to enter into this parade.
Right, same as the Christmas Parade.
Okay then, well then, if, 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 if they're going to collect the fee for this parade, where do those, what are those funds going? Can't those funds go towards the police department? Why, why are the, why are the citizen, why are the citizen paying for the police? That don't make no sense, this is why, this is why that it's cloaked the way it is on the agenda. Special event, don't nobody want to put a name to it? It make no sense. It's, it's just like robbing the citizen in the daytime without, with a, without, with a gun, without a mask, or whatever, it make no sense.
Anybody else? Okay, looking for a motion to approve the road closure for the Dr. Martin Luther King Parade. So, got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, special events request, road closure for Main Street Apopka's Showcase of Cars.
All right, thank you, last one for me tonight. The item for you is, uh, street closure request for the special permit application for Main Street Apopka's Showcase of Cars event, which is, uh, scheduled for February second, twenty-twenty-five. Requested street closure is a section of Fifth Street, uh, between Park Avenue and Central Avenue, with access to the Fifth Street parking lot between the hours of eight AM and four PM on February second, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, attached with your packet was a special event permit application that was submitted. Uh, it has been reviewed by staff, including police and fire departments, uh, and is recommended for approval. The DRC recommended unanimous approval for the special event permit application, along with provided street closures at the December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting. This item is being brought forth now to city council for final approval of the requested closure. Uh, it is the same closure that's currently used for the market on Fifth Street.
Any questions for Bradley, or the applicants here as well?
Yeah, sorry, I see Caitlin Keshad is here as well.
Any questions? Anybody from the public which should speak on this one? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the road closure for the Main Street Apopka, Apopka's Showcase of Cars. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Next up, ordinance number three thousand sixty-seven.
Ordinance number three thousand six seven. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka. Changing the future land use designation from county rural to mixed use for certain real property generally local. for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of Andich and F E Drive, comprising fifty-four point eight five acres more or less owned by P M S one R E O L L C, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Just for the record, it's Andich, but just, but, yeah, you're, you're, so anyway, okay. All right, it's a, any changes? No changes. Any questions? Anybody from the public which should speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand and sixty-seven. So got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand and sixty-eight.
Ordinance number three thousand sixty-eight. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from county A one citrus rural to mixed use for certain real property generally located on the southwest corner of Andich Road and F E Drive, comprising fifty-four point eight five acres more or less owned by P M S one R E O L L C, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Any changes? Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand and sixty-eight. So got a motion by Commissioner Smith. Second, second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand seventy-eight.
Ordinance number three thousand seventy-eight. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka, Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural, city F L U in progress, and city residential, very low suburban, to mixed use for certain real property generally located south of West Kelly Park Road and east of Chandler Road, owned by Orchid Estates, H O A Community, Mega G N G L L C, Jacobs Knaveley, four-six-two-five Chandler Road L L C, Matthew and Deborah Shaw, Daphne Martin, Walter H. Robinson the Third, U Sheik Um Irrevocable Trust, P M S one R E O L L C, comprising of a hundred and sixteen point nine four acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Any changes? Anybody from the public which should speak on this one? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number three thousand seventy-eight.
This is the second reading, so, uh, some.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez. Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number three thousand and eighty-five.
Ordinance number three thousand and eighty-five. In ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from commercial to industrial for property owned by Anderson Apopka L L C, located north of Marshall Lake Road and east of Bradshaw Road, comprising two point two eight acres more or less, providing for severability conflicts and an effective date.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amir Hamza. I'm a planner. The applicant has submitted a small-scale future land use amendment, uh, from commercial to industrial for property located on ninety-one South Bradshaw Road, which is just south of U S four forty-one and north of Marshall Lake Road. These are the vicinity and aerial maps of the ninety-one South Bradshaw roadside. The total site area is two point two eight acres. The applicant is requesting the future land use so that it is compatible with the existing zoning of the property, which is I dash L Light Industrial District. The property currently has an existing building that was developed in twenty nineteen and is currently being used for multiple tenants for small warehouse and office use, which is permitted in the I dash L Light Industrial District zoning. As I mentioned before and shown on these maps, the future land use is currently commercial and is proposed to change to industrial. Zoning is the I dash L Light Industrial District. The Development Review Committee has recommended approval. At the December tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting, the planning commission unanimously recommended approval for the future land use amendment based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits. The recommended motion is to accept first reading of ordinance number three thousand eighty-five and hold it over for second reading and adoption on February fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, any questions for Mayor?
I just have one. To confirm, the maximum proposed floor error ratio is point six?
Yeah.
Okay, it, it, it says sixty. The maximum floor error ratio shall be sixty, so.
Oh, must have been a typo, yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that it's, that on, on the record, it's, the proposed is point six.
Yeah, point six.
That's in fact, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public which should speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve ordinance number three thousand eighty-five first reading and hold over for a second reading and adoption. So got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh six.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh six. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-four and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, providing for budget.
Thank you, Susan. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Blanche Sherman, Finance Director. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh six, budget amendment number five in the amount of sixty-six million, eight hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred nine dollars. Number one is related to the appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-four rollover amounts into fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Uh, we have purchase orders and ongoing capital expenditures, which are related to the contractual obligations, grants, and capital projects. Some of the key projects in regards to P O's and remaining funding consist of the fleet building phase two, uh, facility assessment, the design work, some renovations and designs for fire station two, three, and five, uh, vehicles for police and fire, um, northwest inclusive playground parks, some P O's related to that. Kelly Park Road widening, P O's related to that. Kelly Park Road construction that was designed and construction, fire station six, C D B G sidewalk phase two, gross embarker project, um, some Golden Gem Pond remake remediation, northwest, um, storm and reuse upgrades, some lift stations, and several other projects in regards to the P O's. Some of the key projects without P O's but are moving forward, red light and green light delay on a fire, fire station bay, some fire station renovations, tower truck, ambulance, other vehicles, um, work with the amphitheater of Apopka Birding Park, Frank Carlton, excuse me, um, ADA renovations and for the inclusive playground, Kidland Park, Gasebo, high ropes course rebuild, other vehicles, and northwest, uh, recreation design, uh, relief driveway in the soccer fields, and the, um, design funds for the public safety building, gross embarker and northwest reclaimed storage ponds, and several other projects. I just wanted to give you some of the projects. And if you don't have any questions on that, I'm gonna go to number two.
Process question. If for somewhere, I mean, there's a substantial amount of, of rollover dollars
Yes.
as well as projects that we're, that we're working through here. If there's a project that we now say, we don't wanna do that anymore. We can't afford that. That's a luxury item, whatever that may be. Are we able to not earmark it and apply it somewhere else?
You, as long as it's not obligated. When it's, the P O's issued, you basically obligate.
Sure.
It's under contract. The other remaining funds, um, you do have that option.
Are you able to provide a list of what is obligated and not of these projects?
If you, the P O's are obligated, and then the other ones are not. You have a total amount, the obligated amounts at this point in time is about thirty-nine million. The unobligated, and remember now, this is as of September thirtieth, is about twenty-seven million.
Okay.
So we'd have to look at that twenty-seven.
Oh, I see how you, I see the difference here. So the, of that twenty-seven million, that, that, or more so, the twenty-seven million is where we may have some flexibility to move some money around as needed, um, with new things coming online. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for Blanche?
One more.
Oh, one more.
We have the position that we're transferring from parks and wrecks to streets. It's a parks worker, maintenance worker one. I think as we talked about in the briefing, the work that this person is doing is basically suited more on the streets than parks and wreck. So we just transferring those funds.
Did, and to confirm, the worker that we're, the employee that we're discussing, they were in agreeance to this? That was comfortable? There wasn't an issue with that?
By understanding, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, Commissioner?
There's an employee that we're switching from one department to another. I just wanted to make sure that it, that they're in agreement with that as well because they were hired under one department and now switching to.
Well, actually, it's a vacant position. The employee was, uh, dismissed for cause.
Okay.
Uh, and it, it was a parks, uh, position that was transferred to, uh, public services, but the, the title was never changed, and it's more appropriate to change the title because we were going to, um, uh, publish the, the position. So at that point, we've reviewed it and, uh, determined that it would be more appropriate to rename it to, uh, Public Services Worker One.
So, so that they are hired in that consistent? They don't, they're not changing between?
Right, because that, that person was the only one within that area that was that title.
Got you.
And the work that's being done is more appropriate to the, the new title and, and job description.
Understood. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
So the, the section that you have the improvements other than buildings, I see a long list. It starts with Bradshaw, Johns Road, fire station, traffic signals and improvements. Are these all P O's? Are these all?
It depends on which list you're looking at, Commissioner.
Oh, that's on page. I think that's page five?
Page five.
Um, of, what, you have the list of, you know, carryovers. And that's that one oh two, three, uh, dash three, four, one, three, five, four, one.
Let me see if I can.
Page five? Page five. It, it has improvements other than buildings. And it has Bradshaw and Johns Road, fire station, traffic signals, Golden Gem, Harman and Benyon. If this is the, that's the one that it's, it's, uh, nine million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
If you're looking at the numbers at the bottom in the corner here, it says page five of this, that's P O's. If that's the one you're looking at.
I think the, the number.
If you're looking at the one with colors like this.
I had the wrong one.
Oh, okay. Yes, that's the one I'm looking at. Okay, no, no P O's at, as of nine thirty.
Okay, because that's a long list of different projects that, so there's no P O's, but they're all carryover?
Yes, we're moving the funds forward so the projects can continue because they were budgeted in twenty-four, included in the budget for twenty-four.
Were they all budgeted in our last fiscal, or is it going even further back?
Some of them are going further back.
Would you be able to kind of tell me how far back some of these have gone?
Yeah, it'll take some work, but we can get it.
And then, um, did we have a timeline for any of these? I mean, did we get P O's? Do we have any, any of them actually?
Well, the ones with the P O is that separate list that totals thirty-nine million. The ones that did not have P O's as of nine thirty is that list of twenty-seven million. And what I think you're asking me for is to give you the ones that don't have a P O.
Right.
What, how long have they been rolling over?
How long have we been carrying it over?
I will find out. And I, we have that information. We can get it for you. Okay.
And Commissioner Velazquez, that's, the questions I was having is, is the point was, okay, if we've been having this a long time not doing it, is it time to restructure this, move the money around? Because that's twenty-seven million that, it's not, it's not, um, locked in yet, basically, so.
As of nine thirty.
Sure. So there could be an updated list here, but that gives us the opportunity that if we do have another need or a new need, that we find a little more important than some of these, then that would be the list that we could remove from or could massage or edit a little bit.
I can get you some more information in regards to that. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Blanche? Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter?
Rod Olson, thirty-one fifty-six, Early Hills Lane. This continues to be frustrating for me. Sixty-six thousand here, hundred and fifty thousand there. Every meeting, we're moving, running around, and it goes back to where I've been critical of the budget process. These carryover items should have been included in the budget. We shouldn't be wasting community time and your time moving money every time. It's no reflection, Blanche, on you and your staff and the hard work you do, but we need to do a better job of budgeting so we're not constantly moving money. Thank you.
Anybody else? Not look for a motion to approve resolution twenty, oh, I'm sorry.
Virginia Street, twenty-one nineteen Pond Vista. The twenty-seven million that we're talking about, I, I agree with, um, with possibly looking at what's there and seeing if they're still relevant and reorganizing, or, you know, just trying to decide, is this something that we really need to be doing? Or is it another priority that needs to get in front of this list? But I don't know if there's a, is, is there a set period of time? Is that on the agenda anywhere? I'm asking, Mayor. Is that on the agenda to review the list of the twenty-seven million that's left to see if these things are still relevant?
I mean, we can, we'll bring it back up at the next meeting. I guess if everybody wants to look at the.
Mayor, may I suggest that we make that a part of the, the budget process, which is gonna be starting here soon?
I mean, we've, we've approved whatever's in.
Right, whatever's there now.
We've approved it at city council.
Yeah, we approved it and it hadn't been done in twenty twenty-four, right?
Correct.
So since it hasn't been done, it's time to reevaluate to see if it still needs to be done, if it hadn't been completed, and to see if there's something else that might need to come in front of it. So that's my, that would be my only suggestion.
Thank you.
And I, I do realize some of these projects takes years to do, but, you know, those, those are, uh, there's no brainer with that, you know, but when you do have projects that haven't been addressed in the timeframe, you know, either you use it or lose it, you know, and, and that maybe needs to be some mentality that we put in our process. But I do like, um, being able to review that as we get ready to start budget. Yeah, thank you.
Sylvester Hall, real quick. When you start looking at all these things and what my neighbor Rod was talking about, and when you rewind the clock a little bit, that's where the forensic audit was so important that we shot down. It give you a chance to get all your ducks in one order, give you a chance to find out exactly where you are, what's happening, what shouldn't be happening, and how we correct and how we move forward. So I just want to reiterate that to you guys. And when you talk about a forensic audit, Mayor, it was funny, when you ran for office, that's one of the things that you went to Mr. Kimcham, Kilcham. We need a forensic audit because the reserves have been mismanaged. But now, when we need another forensic audit, you're just totally against that. These are the kind of things that I say, when you normalize the abnormal, you desensitize the truth to the point the truth doesn't matter. And so when myself, Leroy, and some of the others, Ace, Rod, when we come up here, we speaking for one thing, the fairness and the caring of our residents. We're not speaking for nothing, for our individual selves. And you say, why we do it? Because that's what we do. That's what we're supposed to do. Take care of our neighbors, speak up for the ones who can't speak up for themselves, speak up for the ones who are suppressed and who are scared because they need their paycheck to say something. So I ask you again, I say twenty twenty-five is. So I ask you again, I say twenty twenty five is going to be a great year. Please take all that in consideration. Thank you.
Anybody else?
If not, we close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash oh six. So got a motion by Commissioner Anderson.
I'm going second and and you will provide, you know, respectfully as.
The information they requested, yes, ma'am.
How long we have been kind of carrying over some of these.
I'll give you the year it was originally budgeted. I thank you.
We got a motion by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Velazquez, all is in favor. All opposed, motion carries now. Thank you, Blanche. Mr. Anderson, why don't you get us started?
So give me a second. Excuse me, I'm kind of. Come and give it over call, so give me a second.
Well, if you guys don't mind, can we just jump right to the attorney's report? I've got. Mr. Shanin's in the house and I know he's he's past his bedtime and. You got somebody as important as Mr. Shanin in the house. You gotta, you gotta.
Where I come from, they say that's high cotton. And and we also have Scott Hottenstein from the office, so. We are in the company of elective royalty. You asked me to uh to talk to you about the. Issue of when we're going to hold municipal elections. It got sort of, not not sidetracked, but there was a an additional track brought into play, and that is. The possibility of annexing South Apopka. That is a separate matter. It it is done through a referendum of the people who will be annexed. In order to do that, just brief description, you have to have a vote of the people who live in the area. So the first thing you got to do is give me the boundaries for the area. You have to have an ordinance, you have to have two public hearings, and there's a whole lot of other things. And if you want a memo on the procedural aspects of that, happy to do it. But for tonight's purposes, with the assistance of the folks from the Supervisor's Elections Office, I'm hoping to get a decision from you on. When you want to have your municipal elections. As a refresher. Your charter at section four point oh four says your elections are going to be in the first Tuesday in December, which. Everyone here would know has not happened for a very long time. I actually found out how long. Uh it has been since uh two thousand and nine, um because I got Susan to bring me the ordinance. I said. Per your charter, it says this is when they're going to be held unless there's an ordinance. Is there an ordinance? And she said, yes, there is. And it was under former Mayor Land. That ordinance was adopted. That's how we got to March. So that's how we're proceeding. It's a little bit odd to have an ordinance that says. Uh that it overrules the charter, but that's the way the charter's set up, so it's okay. And yet, in going through the charter view, you still have this outstanding provision that says elections will be the first Tuesday in December. So that's the thing that I brought to your attention, and since then, there's been discussion, okay, when do we want to have it? There are multiple options um at one time, and you'll hear this from the folks themselves who have had the. Benefit of a preview of what they're going to say. At one time, we were being told that March is our option. And unless we want to pay for a special election at our own expense and everything that goes along with that, that March is the option. Um that was by the prior administration in OC uh in the Orange County Supervisor's Elections Office. And that was at a time when it seemed like there might be a preference for November. Uh amongst the majority of the folks up here. That's my doing math. If I screwed that up, that's what I thought at the time anyway. And I'd asked someone to come speak. Uh they had agreed to come speak and try to explain their their rationale. And then there was a regime change. As you know, Mr. Cowles retired. Uh after a long career, he was replaced with Mr. Gilzian and apparently think that a little bit. You know, out of whack there in the office because I couldn't get anybody return emails, phone calls and so forth. But now we have a new administration, Ms. Castor Dentel, who was nice enough to give me not one, but two. I asked for one speaker, I got two. So I'm doing really good on that and here to answer your questions about November, March, or some other alternative. But I'll spoil the thunder just by telling you they're they're okay with November. Um and so uh that's what it's about. Once you all tell me what to do, then I can draft that amendment, and let me explain why that matters. The other part of your charter, uh which is, I think it's two point oh three. Sets election and terms and set that stagger going back to all the way to nineteen ninety three. So that seats three and four are on odd years began in nineteen ninety three. And then the even, the other uh seats, one and two, plus the mayor are in the other years. So that's how you set your stagger. And as a result of that. Your March dates work because you had that ordinance that's got everything adjusted over a long period of time until that's where we are. If you change to the November and if the voters approve the change. Then what will have to happen is I'll have to draft the ordinance in such a way that in addition to approving the change. They will also have to approve for at least that first go around, uh in a lengthening of the terms. That would otherwise come up because they can't, you can't have terms expire in March. But not have an election until the following November. So we'd have to kind of run those things together. So that for the first term only, that at least two of you, if I remember the calculation correctly. Would get carried over until the November election so that the stagger would be on and the the rest of you. Would also get the benefit of the additional time, but you would just would have the rest of that on to your time instead of being the next November election. So that's how that would work. Um but I'm going to step aside now and let the the dream team come explain to you everything they need to.
Thank you, Cliff. What he said, we're done. May may it please the board, my name's Nick Shanin. I am a long-term general counsel for the Supervisor of Elections Office. I served Bill Cowles since twenty ten uh throughout the the remainder of his career until he decided. Or rather Cheryl Cowles, his wife, decided that his his term was up and and he retired. Uh I continued to serve as ancillary counsel. Uh to the supervisor during the interim year and now uh with the election of Karen Castre Dentel, I've returned as general counsel. And I look forward to assisting the city of Apopka, uh your wonderful clerk who's been to our office many times. Um and of course, all the municipalities as we proceed forward uh with the a new dawn. What uh what Attorney Shepherd said is correct on all the fronts. The first front being that. Uh to the extent that Apopka can get its ordinance and its charter in sync, that would clearly be preferable. You know, it's understandable how that uh the kind of asynchronous step occurred. Uh back in the day, but if we can get that aligned, it'll certainly resolve any. Uh mysteries as to when that election's supposed to be when people look to one uh document instead of the other. Uh but it was true that the strong preference uh previously was for. All the municipal elections to be held at one time, um and that time would be in the March month. Of the odd numbered years, or rather, yeah, rather the even numbered years. And the the purpose for that was that uh the city could piggyback on the presidential preference primary. And and that works, uh but there are there are inherent problems with that. Uh one is that the flow of voters. Uh alternates every four years on which uh group might be stronger in their representation. At that particular election. So the city of Orlando, uh several years back, said, gee, we're not really comfortable with that. We want to move. And they moved uh with the supervisor's consent to the November of the odd numbered years. So the city of Orlando has been running their elections in November with a runoff if necessary. Uh a few weeks later in December uh for several years now, and that has worked just fine. So because the city of Orlando has been running their elections in November, if other municipalities wanted to also run their elections in November. Uh that would, that would be absolutely fine and in fact would be encouraged uh because that would, that would work out well.
So odd number years, not even?
Not even numbered years. And 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 that's important that uh. There are municipalities out there that have their elections run in tandem with the general election. Uh that's the even numbered years, but there are a lot of difficulties uh that occur when you do do that. Uh one which is that to your own important elections may get lost literally on the end of a very long ballot. There really is such a thing as voting fatigue or voter fatigue and uh. Uh it's not uncommon that the races at the top get the majority of the votes and races down near the bottom. Just don't get half as many votes. And uh it that, it's important in my view for your municipality or in every municipality. To to get the full consideration by every voter uh who wants to vote. So that's, that's why I recommend. Uh not having those elections in sync with uh the general election. And in our instance, that is simply not an option that Orange County offers. Uh because of not just that issue, but a lot of other issues. The length of the ballot. Uh becomes a problem, not just for the voters, but for the election office. That, uh for example, we had two full ballots this year. Had we had a single other race, it would have moved on to a third piece of paper. Each additional piece of paper is one more piece of paper to go into every single machine, literally multiplying. Uh the number of opportunities for for problems with machinery, with counting, with recounts, with all of the things. That that word recount, I won't say it during the month preceding an election. Uh but I I can say it now because we're safely far away from them, but. If the city has a recount, it's simply easier to do if you have a municipal only election than if you have to wait. For uh you know, some important senatorial race, say, to get recount recounted first and then we'll get to your, you know, municipality when we get to it. You know, uh there there are, there are a hundred reasons why it's problematic to uh to merge your general election and your. Um municipal elections, but uh there is no problem at all in running concurrent municipal elections. Uh so if it was the will of this board to move their elections to November. The the city of Orlando has been the guinea pig for years, uh has worn the path properly, and we would be happy. Uh at the supervisor's office to assist you in maneuvering your election to fit with that schedule. Are there any questions that I can answer for the board?
Questions?
No, and and then I'll bring up Scott. I would like to introduce Scott with the office. He's our deputy chief of staff and is a longtime. Friend of of our supervisors and is a welcome addition to our office. So Scott.
So I'm uh Scott Hottenstein, Director of Outreach and Education. During the transition, the new supervisor met with uh many of the city clerks. And um there's been a strong preference with other municipalities, actually all the ones that we talked to. To move elections from March to November. And just from a voter education, voter outreach kind of concept. It makes it easier to let every voter know November is when I vote. Could be a gubernatorial, it could be a presidential, or it could be your your local municipal elections. Uh having talked to uh your your attorney, it's easier for you because you have four-year terms. And you're already in the odd years. You just have to extend the term that first time. Other municipality.
We're even, we're even.
Oh, you're even?
They're March even, so.
March even.
So the adjustment to the November odd would require, you know, the as.
Yes, okay.
If you went to an odd, that you'd have to go from March of twenty six, which would be the normal next election to. November of twenty seven?
November of twenty seven or November of twenty five, but you couldn't do it in time for November of twenty five.
And you you'd short, yeah.
So you can instead have the have those elected in March and then you can do your, the next people. Um on the November of when, you know. You can make it where their term wouldn't be elongated by 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 that long and still work. That that's.
I I don't understand how that would work.
Yeah, we're we're March of even years.
Yeah, so like right now, we have March of twenty six.
All I can, all I was going through was the charter that says that there will be the uh the third, C three and four. Whose terms expire in nineteen, in December of nineteen ninety three. So I didn't know whether that got moved to March of nineteen ninety three or get pushed. To March of nineteen ninety four because based on your charter, it says the stagger will start in in nineteen ninety three. I'm guessing now what you're saying, what you're saying is that based on the ordinance that was adopted under Mayor Land, that they must have pushed it.
Yeah, i- if I may ask, what, when do you take office after the election?
April.
So perhaps we run the election in November of twenty seven. And whoever's terms were expiring in uh March of twenty eight. Would take office in April and you'd finish the term.
It it's, that is, that is a puzzle that we're going to have to work with your counsel to help you figure out.
The the real point. This is not a an ongoing thing. It's a one-time thing, but in order to keep a stagger term so that all five aren't elected at the same time. Somebody has to get longer terms in order to get to November. If that's what is the preference. If you stick with March, which is. Uh what we're doing currently, then you're already on a stagger. That's not going to be an issue, but we'll just simply have to have the charter match what's in the ordinance. Obviously, not now the SOE's preference, but that's the issue because at least. Uh in order to get us where we need to go for the next, eh, once this, if this was approved. Terms would have to be extended in order for the stagger to work out.
So. I ran um an election in March and got appointed in April.
Correct.
Then there was a special election in August. Runoff and I ended up in December with the runoff. Then the third term, because I then I completed a term that was left on the table by the commissioner that resigned. But then I had to run for office again. And I ended up on the November. Because I ran. And I did, but the thing was that with the November and the presidential election. Was the most challenging because of what you said.
And I recall that. That was, that was highly unusual. Include it with the general, but we made the exception.
Literally, I had to stand for fourteen days reminding people that. My seat was way at the end.
Right.
And it was a very big challenge. I I find March to be. The most comfortable for municipal because then it's just municipal. But we have, we have uh the neighboring municipalities also having this, you know, their election. So there is, you know, um kind of like all the municipalities are kind of campaigning and there's. Elections, so I mean, the residents are aware that there is an election. I know that, you know, um most people say it's when we have the lowest turnout. But I think over the years, I have seen the turnout become much more. Because the the residents are getting more involved in their local municipalities. And with Apopka growing as it has, I'm seeing enough, enough take in in voters. Coming out to elections.
And and to be clear, the supervisor's office is very content to remain in March. Or to assist you in moving to November, uh where we can, we can run the municipal elections in either of those dates. But it's simply a matter of of which one you would prefer. And I I definitely understand that one issue with that will be if you were to move. How do you do so and successfully stagger your elections properly? That that will be something you will need to work out with your with your city attorney. A solution. Must be able to exist because we've we've transitioned other cities before, but I I, you know, as I stand here.
Other municipalities are looking at November.
That that is.
Yes, that was some of the discussions with city clerks during the transition. So they're they're asking our office, how do we modify our charter? And that's, has been a priority in the SOE office this first week. But it's definitely on our work list to help the various municipalities and city clerks. City attorneys work through their charter issues to get to perhaps November odd year elections.
Are you able to give us and start interrupting a quick, just a couple of quick examples of what other municipalities have similarly done this successfully so that we can? Go back and kind of see how to properly.
Only city that moved from March to November is the city of Orlando. That that has been at least a decade uh that Mayor Dyer uh made the request to move off of March. Uh and uh and suggested November and we were amenable to that. Ma Ann Downs remains city attorney and I'm sure she could provide some some consultation on how they staggered their city council. Uh elections. I I I don't, don't recall that.
Understood.
But I know we could, we could, we could find that out.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so they, Orlando only have the elections in the odd year?
They only have elections.
And it's still standard?
Yes, that's exactly right. Novem- November of odd year is city of Orlando elections and they stand alone. No other municipality has 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 been with them. And of course, because of the size of Orlando, that's. And of course, because of the size of Orlando, that's, that, that too was just fine by the supervisor, but. I believe I'm in the city, all the second largest municipality in all of Orange County, so if you wanted to join Orlando. That would be quite the election day in Orange County.
And Orlando terms are also four years, yes?
Yes.
So that's where we are similar. Three years would make it a little weird, but four years makes it easier.
That was, that was in fact my concern when I heard the suggestion, like, we can certainly move to November unless they have three-year terms. If you have three-year terms, then that, then you, we can't, simply can't make that work because of the, uh, November issue. But you don't have that. You've got even twos, twos and fours, twos and fours work fine. It's just a matter of how to start, uh, to make that happen.
Why don't we, if y'all don't mind, why don't we have them come back and you've got some of the, I'd love to know how Orlando transitions. That would be a, that'd be a wonderful discussion if we could.
Sure, we'd be happy to return. We're here, we're here for you and Karen Castor Dental is happy to, to be part of the, the, the community going forward.
Answer the phone.
Yes, and she will answer the phone.
I can get you also a copy of whatever referendum or whatever they did to make the change, so you can sort of read the language and if I need to put it in. Less legal te- terms, I can do that for you, at least attempt to. But again, I assume, because it doesn't make sense otherwise, that somebody's terms had to get extended if they were in March. There's no way that otherwise it works for you to have a stagger. It, it doesn't have to happen but once, but it has to happen at least once to have a stagger.
Yeah, if you can send us that, I think that'd be very valuable. Do we have a timeline of kind of when we want to bring this back up for discussion and what that looks like?
Next one, that's the next meeting. I, I, it shouldn't take two weeks, should it? I mean.
It shouldn't take that long to, to just, to determine it and someone from our office can be right.
Yeah.
But yeah, that'll work.
This would be for the next meeting?
Yeah.
Would you just show me, come with the chart and show me which two seats, or is it two seats or three seats?
Well, and that's, again, yeah, that you, 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 that would be this board's determination and of course. When the voters, because this would be a voter determination whether they want to amend to change from, uh, March to November. That part of the language of that would specify that these two seats would hypothetically be extended. So the voters would knowingly be including that as part of what they were voting for when they did so.
A hundred percent. Let, let me, let me help here, here. Because this is a weird situation where we're amending the charter, the even fact that we have an ordinance will not be on the ballot. Right? The fact that the reason we're doing March elections is because of an ordinance, that's not out there. What will be there is December is what you're changing and you're changing it to November. Without any explanation, that's all a voter will understand. They will also see, but not necessarily understand, well then how come terms are being extended if it used to be December, but now it's going back to November? I'm so confused. So voter education, factual education, not, not advocating. Will be critical in making people understand why this is happening and then the way it's happening. Because it's a weird system to have the charter say one thing, but allow for an ordinance which there is, but which would not be affected. By this change. The ordinance would essentially be.
In reality, then we would be putting something on the ballot that is not factual.
No, it's factual, it's just not complete, because you're changing the charter. And if the charter was to be voted on in that way, by definition, the ordinance is no good anymore.
Okay.
So that's how it would work. And i- it's, it, it is the way it works out because of the way this was set up back, you know, in, under the, you know. Two administrations ago. And that's if you're gonna make the change, and if you don't make the change, then you, you can just simply make it consistent with your ordinance of March to March. Okay, uh, again, the key, the key issue to me and the reason I brought it up to you is because. Most people would look to your charter for when elections are and go, why are we having elections in March if the charter says December? The answer is the ordinance, but that's not gonna be on a charter amendment. The charter amendment will bend the charter. So the words December will be stricken in place of the words November and additional words to add for the staggered terms.
Okay.
So to confirm, this will be on the February fifth?
Yes.
January, this is the fifteenth, it'll be on the.
February fifth meeting.
Okay.
So Attorney Shepherd, we'll be able to get your information.
Yeah.
No later than that Friday, the thirty-first, just to make sure that was issued last time, so not your fault, just.
No, no.
I want to make sure we have that information prior to that, so there's no delays.
I should be able to find this right out of Munich code, frankly.
Okay, understood, thank you.
The other thing to understand is since you're amending your charter, you have to have an election to do that, so there's a timeline. To have this voted on, approved by the, the citizens and then implement.
It, it, once we get what we want, so that we, and then you'll decide on the ordinance. This is what we wanted to send to the voters, then you'll have to tell me, okay, when are we sending it? And then they vote on it, then, what, what it says, then puts in play everything that follows thereafter. So, you know, I think when we get what Orlando did and then a timeline, how, how that. Yeah, that, that would be nice so we can all kind of, you know, focus in on that, but yes.
Be happy to assist.
Super.
You got it.
Appreciate it. Tell, tell Karen I said hi.
Will do.
Yeah, awesome, thank you.
Thank you very much. See y'all February fifth.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. All right. Go back to the city council reports then? No, no, this, this was, this was under the attorney's report. Yeah, okay. Commissioner Anderson?
I just want to say Happy New Year to everyone and, um, I have a lot of the community events, outreach events planned, uh, workshops. Uh, next city council meeting, I will have the list of events up until twenty twenty, the December of. I think eight events I'm planning for the community, so, um, I'm excited to announce those events, um, next city council meeting. That is it, and Happy New Year.
Mr. Blaskis.
A few things, um, of course, um, as we, you did announce today that Diane Almodova is gonna be coming in and taking. Filling in for the, uh, office that was vacated by Mr. Deal that.
No, by Richard Earp.
Oh, by Richard Earp?
Yes.
Okay, so we still have two offices that we need to fill and that would be. Mr. Deal that's office, which is Public Services, I should say, Director of Public Services. We still have to do the, uh, office for trans, the Director for Transportation. Because Ms. Almodera is only gonna be there temporarily until we get. Until we hire someone.
Right, that's correct.
And then we have the Economic.
Development Director.
Director, are we looking for anyone there?
Yes, we are. As well as the Community Development Director. And we, we've had quite a few applicants and interviews, so we're, we're in the process right now.
Okay, so, um, because I tuned in to the DRC this morning. And what I found interesting, well, you know, we didn't have any, we had three members of our staff there. But what was interesting was a project. And I remember Chief McKinley had some concern. About the stormwater runoff going into Border Lake. And, um, did, I'm sorry, Chief McKinley did, did that get approved this morning? The project for, that was coming before, I guess it'll come before us, but. We, we really need to address, or, or do we have any plans to collaborate with the. County and Seminole over Border Lake and the flooding issue?
Yes. We're working on, we had a meeting last week, uh, can't remember what day last week. With, uh, St. John's Water Management and our team, so we're trying to come up with a solution for the excess water, correct.
All right, would you keep us updated with that?
Absolutely.
Because I did, I did, um, contact, of course, our county commissioner and she had some ideas and. Orange County was willing to, um, their staff was willing to share some of their ideas. Did you collaborate with, uh, Orange County at all?
I, we are, we've been in, in contact with them, I, you know, we're looking at the, the basins, the three basins, which is Lake Page, Lake Pleasant. And Border Lake. And I think, as I recall, it's, it's about, uh, of the basins, it's about forty percent's Orange County, forty percent's the city of Apopka. And the other twenty percent is some, is, is between DOT and Seminole County, so to come up to a hundred percent. So whatever, whatever funds are needed to for that project, it will, it will be based on. Contributions by the, the four parties involved.
Okay, um, before Richard Earp left, I did ask him to provide a list. And I, I don't know if each of the commissioners, uh, received it, but it was a list of all the capital projects that they were working on. And it's a quite extensive list, and so I just would like to know, um. I guess, get an idea of where a timeline for each of these, uh, projects. Did everyone get that list? Did you get that list?
No.
No, did you get that list? You get that list, okay. Um, I guess, uh, we'll have to, I, I believe I sent, it was sent to you also, um, to the city clerk. And I'll respectfully ask if we, if each of the commissioners can get it.
And what is that a list of again?
It's a list of the projects that are actively, that are active right now and that he was overseeing and managing.
Specifically, Richard Earp?
Yes.
Okay, understood.
And, and, uh, public services, both public services and Richard Earp.
Got you, okay.
Okay, also, um, I did ask back in December. A request for another workshop, a second workshop for the comp plan. And that was because the first comp plan workshop, uh, we were. It was the two boards, the Planning and Zoning and our board. There were two members that did not, uh, that were not present from the Planning and Zoning and since then, we had one that resigned. We have a new member that's on the board. And, uh, and of course, the, uh, the survey did not really render anything positive from the. Uh, public. We only had like four responses and, and according to Bobby. The three out of the four were basically responses, no more development, so I, I believe that maybe. The public doesn't understand, you know, what information or what feedback we, we would like to see from them. As far as the comp plan, so I feel like a second workshop that would include all the members from the Planning and Zoning. And, and this board would be, uh, effective.
What, what's the, um, Susan, what's the, the notice requirement on that? A workshop? Well, why don't we do this? We've got one, uh, in, under the mayor's report, he was gonna, he was gonna, just was gonna bring up the joint meeting with the council and planning. Reed Wild Oaks via, so we just could add that to, to the meeting on the twenty-second. I mean, versus having them come twice.
Right, because, um, when I had the gender review with Bobby Howell, he did make mention that.
Yeah.
Actually, and it started with, there was an expense on the December, uh, disbursements. And there were two expenses for Kimberly Horn and it was a comp plan peer review. I didn't quite understand what that was and he explained it to me, so obviously, um. The first group that did our upgrade, is he here? Oh, I can't see him. There were some questions about the first upgrade that was done by the East.
Right, if you'll recall, we had the workshop back in September with the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council. They were the ones that were hired back in twenty twenty-one to do the rewrite of the comp plan. They conducted the workshop. It was also recommended that we hire an outside consultant to oversee their work, to overlook their work. Kim Lee Horn, uh, Kim Lee Horton Consultants. They have looked out over, we have a meeting scheduled with them tomorrow morning to go over some of their findings. Some of their findings staff doesn't agree with, as I mentioned to you yesterday in our briefing, we don't think that they're specific to what Apopka. Planning would like to see, not Apopka Planning Department, but the citizenry of Apopka.
Can you give one example of that?
Uh, one would be allowing multifamily and commercial zoning districts and commercial future land use districts. I know there's a lot of concern about a lot of multifamily of being overrun in the city, so that's one thing that we pointed out. That's one thing. As far as having a joint workshop, being that the Regional Planning Council was writing that, I don't know if next Wednesday would be enough time. I have to coordinate with them.
I was gonna ask you that, in fact, I've just, as she brought it up, I thought, well, if we can put two birds with one stone. No, I, I, so we only, so we need, you need seventy-two hours, Susan?
Yeah.
Well, Bobby, can you see what you can give us? If you've got, I mean, obviously, I don't want to rush it, but if you think you've got enough information that we could do it. We can just add it on to that next meeting and just extend the time. I, that would be, is that okay, Commissioner?
Just what's important is that all the members of the Planning and Zoning are also present. Because, um, these projects all come before, they come before DRC, which is staff. Then the second is of course the Planning and Zoning Board. And I just feel we have a new member and there were, there was two members that were unable to come for whatever reason. Did not have the opportunity to be, uh, participate in that workshop.
And in response to the email you sent me this afternoon, I replied back to you, uh, I got the final results, there were twenty-three. Out of a city of sixty-one thousand that responded back.
Oh, they did?
Yes, ma'am, uh-huh, so we did that online, we posted that all online. One of the things I would ask is, is that with your position that you help educate the public as well. Educating what a comp plan is and getting the word out, because staff can only do so much to get the word out as well. You have a lot of resources at your disposal that we simply don't have.
Okay, well, yeah, if you get with, uh, get with IT and have them put together something, we can all share it on our Facebook page.
Absolutely, I think that would be a really good thing to do.
So if you get with, if you just kind of, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to rush you, but if we could, if we could do both, uh, that would be, that'd be awesome.
And I'll reach out to the Regional Planning Council and see if they're able to come next week.
Yeah.
And I will email the commissioners and, and the planning commissioners a lot.
Thank you, Bobby.
Yes.
Anything else, Commissioner Blaskis?
Just say Happy New Year, um, uh, we had a lot of time off between our last coun- council meeting and of course this one. And there were many, um, community events and, you know, celebrations and church services. So, uh, just want to say thank you to, um, all the organizations and the churches that extended invitations. To each and to some of us, and I tried to make it to almost all the invitations that I did get during the. Christmas holidays and the new year, so thank you and just wishing everybody a Happy New Year and also that, um, as we start the new year. I like to see, uh, kind of our council. Trying to work together and, uh, show a very strong front and really have, uh, consider. And I will say this for twenty twenty-five, consider to, uh, bring that public comment. Where it is accessible to the public that tunes in for us. And, uh, that's something that's, uh, very important to the public. I keep reading about it. And so maybe it's something that to the members on our commission who have voted. To keep it, um, off the live feed to maybe reconsider it and that's it.
Commissioner Smith?
Uh, I too would like to say Happy New Year and just want to, uh, announce that we will be having Martin Luther King Junior Parade on Monday. It began at two o'clock and, uh, began at the, uh, VFW and will end at the John Bridges Center. And at the end of parade, we will have a program, uh, honoring Dr. Martin Luther King at the John Bridges Center as well. And so we invite all the public, uh, to come out and, uh, be a part of the Martin Luther King Junior Parade. And then I just asked that we would just keep, uh, our first responders in California as well as those that are affected by the fire. Lift it up in prayer during its trying time.
Thank you. Mr. Nesta?
Absolutely. Happy New Year to everyone. Uh, I want to just apologize to the public too, to try to wait this long to be able to speak. It's something that we do need to get back to the front as you guys are the most important. And with that, uh, I want to continue to welcome you and, and offer the office hours that I do every Thursday, eleven to one here at City Hall. Come speak about whatever you'd like, um, if there, anything to make the city of Apopka better, I'm available at City Hall every Thursday, eleven to one, so please. Come interact with me and, and let's see how we can make the city better together. The next thing I have is, um, and this is in reference to, um, Mr. Smith, are we able to? More so, I'm, I'm requesting better scheduling for all of us. We have the groundbreaking that happened last week for the skate park and we didn't get an invitation to it less than a week in advance. It's my understanding there may be another groundbreaking for in the inclusive park next week, but don't know dates, times, things like that, so. And it helps for the public to get involved too, so that's the goal, is have them come celebrate the good things that we're doing as well and giving as much lead time as possible as the request. that's the goal, is have them come celebrate the good things that we're doing as well and giving as much lead time as possible as the request for staff to get it on our agendas or plan it, as soon as you guys know, we would like to know as well.
And so uh just to be clear, so what do you think it's at, two weeks?
The better, uh definitely not under a week, I think because we have so many different schedules, dynamic schedules, different invitations that we're having to attend to meetings, things like that, so two weeks would be great, if we can do at least two weeks or more, that would be fantastic.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you. The next one is uh, and I spoke about this uh a few meetings ago, it's the moratorium and and I know um there's different ways I kinda skin this cat and and one of the biggest issues, especially now that we don't have, and and you guys have already referenced the amount of departments that we don't have department heads for, transportation coordinator, community development, public services. We have an interim engineer but not on staff, economic development director, so all these things, we don't have reviewing projects right now as well as what type of infrastructure we have, the plans for infrastructure uh and things of that nature, so what I would ask that we do and and see if we can, on that side note, create more of a robust initiative to get hiring done for for these open departments that, department heads that we really need desperately, because it's gonna slow down our processes if we don't have them in place, so I would ask HR to try to come up with something unique or or different that that gets these uh positions filled in a more efficient way than just posting it in general areas. Most of us were at that community meeting on Monday in reference to the a a new major development at six hundred acres and I think the ongoing sentiment there was that they're not, our residents aren't anti-growth, they're anti-smart growth and that being having functional infrastructure, infrastructure that is planned out, funded correctly, water systems that make sense, roads, schools that have the correct capacity. All of those things need to come into place before we start and continue to improve, approve developments and annexations. And I I'm pretty sure we've all heard that, not only just for that project, but for almost every project that we've approved in the last five to seven years, it's just slow it down, get our roads updated, and there's so many more infrastructure failings that we're happening daily that we need to get ahead of, so my request would be to get approval from the council that we instruct staff to come up with a policy that for one year or until all the departments are fully and properly staffed, to have no more annexations and no more zoning changes, so it's not a moratorium on development, it's just no more annexation and no more upsizing of zoning. If a property is already in the city and already has the proper zoning to do a project, great, move forward with it. But let's create a policy that creates success for our residents, for our staff and for us, so that we're all on the same page and able to ensure that our city is properly prepared in the future for these projects, so is there any feedback to that or you guys anti that, pro that, is there pros cons, what are your thoughts on that?
I don't know, I just wanna make sure that we are kind of working within the statute of of Florida, can we but turn that, can we, with annexations, how does that work?
Uh the 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 short answer is, you're never required to annex anybody, although any, if there's lawyers here wanna argue with me, I'll argue that. Um it uh it's not requirement, whether or not um it it's a good idea to pause it or not, that's a policy decision, so I know better than to wade in those waters. Um if you want me to to put together some sort of a memorandum that covers what might be pros and cons, because as I understood it, it was annexations and what was the other thing?
And zoning changes.
Zoning changes, zoning changes is the bigger problem.
That's.
Um saying, that is a moratorium, whether you call it that or not, cause most of the things that come before you are either a comp plan change or a zoning change or both. And I promise you that developers will call that a moratorium no matter what you call it. And if it's a moratorium, which it would be, you need to have a valid planning purpose. Appointing personnel is generally not a valid planning purpose, but maybe arguably if it's short enough. And it has had a specific time window, so general rule for moratoriums, again, now talking just about the the zoning change, would be that you have to have a valid planning purpose and it's maybe questionable whether personnel decisions are valid, but maybe.
But infrastructure could be that then, correct?
Yeah, could be, if you're studying, the whole idea is that you're, the reason you need the time is you need to figure things out. So you you might be considering changing a type of zoning category or the uses that are permitted or uh how to deal with big box stores or fill in the blank of the things that are the valid planning purposes. And then you have a window, a horizon that you say, we will do this in six months or three months or a hundred and eighty days or three hundred and sixty days. People have gone longer in the course of upheld longer, but the reality is you better be making progress, because if you're just sitting on your hands for those period of time and waiting to the last couple of weeks, say, oh, we did this or that, that's not gonna work, and if you get sued, particularly now in Florida where Burt Harris is so favorable to developers and so not favorable to government, I would not wanna be in a position to try to defend you, and I've defended the most of these of anybody in the state successfully, and I'm telling you, you get this wrong, I will lose, and I like me, I like my chances, but I would lose that.
So what I'm hearing though is you're able to direct us properly to do this to where it's not opening us up to litigation.
On zoning, I don't even think you have to worry about as much on annexation, I'm prepared to hear arguments, like I said, because you never have to annex anybody.
Right.
So I don't think.
You can direct us and and counsel us properly to make sure that it's where we need to be and then we will have a plan in place and and execute it.
I I could do that, I just need to make sure I state properly how long and what the planning purpose is.
Absolutely.
In addition to that, can you put together that pros and cons list of the zoning, the pros and cons?
I'm not being able to hear you.
The pros and cons list?
Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, I think that'd be very valuable, I think, just to see where we're at, and again, that's the ongoing sentiment throughout our city. Is that's what everyone's saying, our infrastructure's not in place, we're adding homes on streets that don't have capacity, that schools don't have capacity, that water pressure's not there on certain times of year and things like that, so my ask is just be open to the concept, uh Attorney Shepherd, please provide that information and let's see how we can navigate forward with this. Again, not anti-growth, but growth that makes sense for the residents and not at the expense of our current residents.
But at the same time, I I understand what you're saying, but if we are doing that, then that means also we must be doing a study.
Correct.
As to what we're gonna do in reference to infrastructure.
Right, we have to actually do something, so if the issue is we need to determine whether we need, and I'm just making stuff up here and Richard would probably shoot me for saying it, cause I don't know what I'm talking about. A six inch line or a twelve inch line or a ten inch line, and that was the issue we need to figure out. Or if it was, we should have uh more industrial over in this part of the city and we should stop putting it in that part of the city, but we need to study that to determine that, something that I can put my arms around, that the development community can put its arms around. Not because I love the development community, cause that's what is required to have a valid moratorium, then I can do it. But you just can't say, well, we we just need to pause, that's not gonna work, you have to be doing something affirmative to get you out of the pause.
Absolutely, and I think two two of the biggest issues is our streets and roads conditions on on our where new developments are being proposed, which would then again, we need lead time to figure out how much this are gonna cost to improve properly, things like that and figure out where the funding's gonna come from. Secondarily, but just as important as our reclaimed water, that's a huge issue of ours right now, that residents don't have enough pressure to water their lawns, they're getting HOA fines and fees. And we need to figure that out as well, we need to figure out what the funding for that is, the plan is for that, we have some major issues coming down the pipeline, no pun intended, for reclaimed water, so that gives us time to kind of figure that out and budget it appropriately and correctly and create a plan for that and make sure that our staff is ready for it as well. What, is that something that could be in a moratorium that is defendable and defensible?
Yeah, well, if it's a realistic possibility, reclaimed water is a tough one, cause everybody struggles with it, cause there's not enough. Right, you wanna use it for watering lawns and golf courses and whatever else it needs watering, but you don't want, you don't need potable water for that, in fact, you don't wanna waste potable water on that stuff. But producing enough is where it's not too polluted, but it's 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 polluted enough you wouldn't wanna drink it, but you wouldn't mind spraying your lawn with it, that's the balance, and I think your Public Works Department would probably tell you that that's not easy to come by. Um it sounds simple, but it's not as simple as it sounds to produ- provide essentially what amounts to a certain level of gray water for watering purposes, and that's what reclaim really is. So it's an ongoing issue, many communities suffer from having a bigger demand for that than is available, not only because of cheaper rates, but because they wanna be able to do it without being restricted to these days or those days or whatever days at all.
And I hear what you're saying with that, our city is going through some unique issues though, that are are starting to to again, bubble up, no pun intended there either, but there are some very unique issues that we're about to be dealing with here in the near future, so and it's gonna be very costly, so I wanna be able to get ahead of those, and I think this is the time that we need, it's either now or it's gotta be later, we're, we gotta do some.
I I have no problem trying to put something together once I know what what the direction is and what it is the basis, what is it you wanna study?
Okay, understood, is that something counsel that you would be open to at least having a further discussion on?
Well, two of the issues, we, I'll bring back, I'll have Public Works, I I think we'll have somebody can talk about the two issues, which is water pressure and uh reclaim, and I can do that at the next meeting. So Glenn, if you, I don't know who, would be you or?
We need, we need to make sure we're speaking correctly here, water pressure and reclaim, they just say.
Well, no, water pressure is a problem because of Northwest Pond.
But and 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 let me just stop right there.
Come up to the the uh.
Well, I don't want to, again, I understand there are issues there, but we still need
Yeah.
to get a plan in place, so there, and we still need time to do that, I still need to figure out funding and things of that nature, so although we can discuss it, there's still that issue there, so Attorney Shepherd, if you can bring that back by the next meeting, again, it's not a formal, it's a memo that we understand pros and cons.
Here are the pros and cons, here's what you need to fill in the blank, here are the blanks you need to fill in.
Exactly, that would be great, by, it's February fifth, I think is our next meeting, so that would be very advantageous.
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna say on water pressure, if we're talking potable water, we have had a problem with potable water pressure per se, because there's a rule of thumb, if we drop below twenty PSI, I mean, we we'd be in trouble.
I think they're talking about reclaimed out at Rock Springs Ridge, which is.
Absolutely, there's a problem out there and we cannot keep the pressure out there, demand is high.
There's, if I'm not mistaken, that's a, that's another concern is with all the developments, do we have enough of the the water, the potable water?
Yeah, so to 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 answer that that question, I think uh this board knows and I think we'll get into that in the next few weeks uh with the problems that we have at Golden Gem, as I said, a large storage basin for us to reclaim water. Uh that is, you know, I think we all know what's going on there, some of the things, maybe not everything, but we'll get, we'll get to that, the thing as I'm getting at is um uh as as you know, we have neighboring contracts with San Lido Utilities or Utilities Inc., the City of Altamont. And uh but as far as, we gotta be able to store that water and right now it's gonna be key to be able to get that for us reclaim. But as far as the reclaim demand and stuff what we have, uh yes, adequately, we we can't keep up with with the demand right now. Uh I think if we get that in place, it's not gonna be a quick fix, that three million where we store that water, as we know, we go through wet season. Uh if we, we can store that and that three hundred million, have a pump station there, it's gonna help us tremendously meeting those pressure and demands.
Okay, thank you, yes, and so as long as we can have that back by the next meeting, that would be very helpful. The final item I have here is i- is really important and and a really big issue that we need to discuss. Mr. Smith, what's the policy in place or what's the process for handling mail here at City Hall? So I, who, when it's dropped off, who's touching it, what office is it going to, where's it going, things of that nature?
I I couldn't answer that, I'm not, not familiar with what happens with the mail there, do we have anybody?
Mrs. Bone, does it go to your office at all?
Uh so it goes to the front desk.
Okay.
And it gets disseminated to the.
Okay.
And there there are times that she'll have to ask, because we have many receptionists and try to find out, you know, from the girls, even whoever's who was in her for lunch or whoever, and they'll generally direct it to whichever department it goes to, and then it goes from there, so. But it does not go to our department, it goes eventually, whatever is ours comes to our. Like it does, it goes to um.
Can you make sure your mic's on?
Somebody.
Just get closer to the mic, I think you're.
I I was just saying, it does not go to our office to be, to be um distributed, it goes through the reception desk. And um if she needs help, then we'll try to help her discern which department it goes to.
Okay, so and and what's the new employee's name at front desk?
Sandra.
Okay, thank you, and then so theoretically, if she's on lunch or something along those nature, along that nature, there could be somebody else at that front desk. Who's usually back at the front desk?
It's community development, usually it's community development staff.
Okay.
Or or Bill, I mean, s- sorry, building department staff.
And it rotates too.
But it rotates, it could be, it could be HR.
Commissioner, it it rotates between human resources, community development and uh city uh clerk's office, depending on staffing.
Okay.
We can do that, so we all. Yeah, there's, there's a regular schedule that happens
Okay.
uh for lunches and so on and so forth, so Sandra's a new employee. Um and the mail does go through her, is there, is there some issue?
Yeah, there, I had, I received a letter that was opened and then taped back up, so.
Was it addressed to you?
Yes.
Okay.
Very directly addressed to me, so that's my issue there, is that my mail's being opened and then taped back shut.
No, I agree.
So.
I'll have to check on that, I'm I'm not sure what happened.
Yeah, and 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 I don't know if that's you or whomever, but that's, it's it's obviously a really big issue, that tampering with mail is not okay.
Yeah, and as far as I know, they don't open mail if it's addressed to somebody. So I'll have to check, I'll have to check on that, but yeah.
I understand it, but it.
That's a big issue for me too.
Yeah, so and I don't want that happening to any other commissioner up here either, the mail that's addressed to us needs to come directed to us and not be opened.
I agree.
So that's a really big issue and I don't know what we can put in place. And Mr. Smith, Attorney Shepherd, I don't know what we can do, whether it's a policy or something along those lines that makes sure that it's set in place of who's handling the mail, cause we've had in the past random letters dropped off with no signatures on it, just in certain people's mailboxes, I've had random things put in only my mailbox versus nobody else's, so.
I can, I can put something together.
That would be very valuable.
A standard operating procedure or something like that, if if everybody is agreeable to that.
Yeah, I think it's definitely needed, we can't have mail being tampered.
No, I totally agree with that.
And I don't know what, if we can figure out who opened it or in what capacity it was the custody of this mail, but it's an issue.
Definitely, definitely needs to be investigated, so I'll take care of that.
Okay.
I'll let you know what, how what I find out.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you for that and 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 we will get to the bottom of that, cause that just, it can't happen. So that's the end of my report, thank you.
Okay, Jacob, I mean, uh well, Cliff, you have anything else or?
I think I'm monopolizing up there tonight.
Okay. Jacob? I just wanted to say Happy New Year as well to to all of you and everybody here. I only have one item here, uh we do have an update on the surplusing of uh the certain city-owned property, the the park. We received an email from FDEP about what can and cannot be done uh with that property and we're talking about the the potential lease to a nonprofit organization, and Blanch has uh an update on that.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners Blanch, Sherman Finance Director. I've sent the email to each of you that we received from FDEP in regards to the proposed surplus of the property, and basically they came back that we could not do a portion of the project. So um if we decide to to continue with that, um we would have to be a a complete conversion. And the conversion requirements require us to find, we have to replace everything that we have under those thirteen acres somewhere else. So that's the status that we are right now, is is and that requirement must be met in order to release the property from the dedication. So we were looking at other locations, but I think we're just still internal discussions on it to see if it's another location suitable for this um proposed um project.
All right, anything else, Jacob or Blanch, good, okay. All right, got quite a few things, um we've got the Arbor Day Celebration, well, and I guess I need to we're gonna have to re- reroute that if we're not sure on the Eighth Street um Park. We're gonna do a plant a tree with the Garden Club at the uh Park on Eighth. So right, I guess let's just, we need to punt and then we'll do it at the uh cemetery then, I know that was the.
That was their original.
So if we can just, I'll I'll get, I'll have Stacy reach out to the Garden Club, we'll move it to that. So it'll be uh.
The cemetery?
Yeah, it'll be January seventeenth at ten AM at the cemetery. Okay, MLK Parade, uh January twentieth, Monday, two PM, starts at the Community Center, uh down to the Bridges Center. Uh we have the joint meeting on the twenty second with the Council and Planning Committee of, it's the re the the Wild Oaks. And so we're gonna, if we can, we're gonna try to attach the community, um I mean, the um community, uh comp plan, comp plan with that. Um we do have an inclusive playground groundbreaking, which will be January twenty-fourth at three thirty at Northwest Rec, it'll be where the the site of the of the inclusive playground will be, which will be the southernmost uh where the old, the playground is currently, so uh we've got uh holidays coming, which is the the hundred thousand dollar um uh sponsors coming to to be a part of that with us, so we're excited for them. Uh, next CRA meeting is uh, February twelfth, five PM at the Community Center. Uh, we've got uh, had uh, Orange County Legislative Delegation meeting was January ninth. And I just put in front of you the couple of things that I brought forward to the Legislative Delegation. One is talking about the SROs and regardless of our differences with Orange County, which I'm not, uh, OCPS, which I'm not happy about the way this thing came down, they should, we had a deal and then the deal changed when we go down to 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 finalize the agreement, so. Anyway, but I I did make the commitment that we'd go to, I'd 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 make a personal trip to Tallahassee to try to get more money for our SRO program. Obviously, we're about sixty percent, we want to, we we feel like we at least deserve a sixty percent uh, funding from OCPS for our SR, SRO program. And so I'll be going to to Tallahassee, see if we can't get some additional resources that would uh, help fund our SR, SRO program. The other one is um, also in working with OCPS, uh, looking to do a uh, an EMS program. I know uh, uh, Chief Sanchez, uh, we've been working on that for a couple of months and we got a, I think, a pretty good program. It's about a two million dollar um, uh, improvement at, to the Gillen Center to go from a training to certification. And so we're going to see if we can get funding to to put the, to bring the Gillen Center up to a standard for certifications. Uh, so we asking the uh, the the local delegation for help in making that happen. Um, one other thing, uh, want to just get the feel from the 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 council here is um, we were, we were uh, approached by the the folks at the Ridge, which is the property, you know, near, near the hospital. Uh, they've got a, an eight acre site, no, eleven acre site that um, it's got some uh, that that they're, they're willing to talk about a swap for our property where Fire Station, the temporary Fire Station Six is. And so they just want to know if that's something we would want to, you know, entertain. And and the, and the purpose would be to uh, to increase the size of that, our, our um, the bike BMX bike park that we're we're putting in there. So just want to see if if that's something we want to do, if not, I mean, we can, we can obviously do the, the, the uh, the park without that property, but it would make it a, you know, I mean, a, almost a regional park if we were able to to do.
Is that behind Frank Carlton, I haven't told?
No, 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 that's down by the hospital.
Okay.
It's the land we.
Station Six.
Well, we're going to swap the land that the, what what they're, what they're want to entertain is swapping the land on Harmon for their land, which is on Apopka Cove.
What, what is the total acres of the?
I think it's, I think ours is eight and theirs is eleven and it doesn't, it might not be a dollar per, or you know, property for property, it might be they have to throw money in or we have to throw money in based on appraisals. I just, I'm just looking to say, hey, are we interested? Because it would get us up to a thirty acre park for for bicyclists that have some really uh, some.
So the property on Harmon, is that the one where our tower is at?
No, it's where the Fire Station Six, the temporary Fire Station Six is.
Next to the apartment company.
Oh, next to the apartment, you know what I'm thinking, because I remember Harmon having uh, we have a property there.
On the other side, on the other side of the road, correct.
Which is the, where the tower is at.
Do we have any use for that or any plans for that, so that station is?
No, I mean, so that, I mean, that's, it's, I'm just throwing it out and just, if if we're not interested, that's fine, I'll just tell them, you know, this, we'll just shrink the the park down to the.
It would be extending which park?
The, the, the park for the bike, bike, bike BMX bikes.
And what's the timeline for that?
We've got the property now, you know, they've got the Orange County property, we've got our property, they they've already, they're going to have some property that they're giving us. Um, obviously, it's wetland property, so it's, there's really no economic value to them, but they're, they're going to throw that in, so. I think it's, Riley knows it, you got any idea, I can't remember how many acres? It's twenty maybe, I I don't know, but but anyway, they wanted to, or they just, they thought, well, if if we wanted to make it a bigger, more regional park, they would, they would entertain a swap, but of some sort.
Who would be maintaining that?
We would, it'd be our park.
That's, that's the, that's an issue because we, do we have the staff to take on, what is, be twenty acres?
Probably thirty, but it would be thirty, I mean, either twenty, thirty, well, it's, it'd be a passive. I don't think we'd even staff it other than the, I mean, Riley, I mean, is a, from a, from a staffing point of view, I think it'd be just a, you know, picking up trash a couple of times a week or, I mean, what, what, what would you envision the staffing needs for that?
I don't think I'm looking at that.
It's a, it, it's a mountain bike park and uh, typically these parks are um, supported by advocacy groups, user groups that come and they help maintain the trails, they help keep the park picked up. Um, Mount Dora has one that uh, we're working on trying to get over to go see. Uh, Seminole County has some as well. Um, so really, it's, it's a, it's one of those partnership vent ventures that you try and get with uh, a user group that uh, that does this mountain biking.
I think I'm more so just want to understand the value of of each park, I mean, of our property that the city owns and that value. And then if their property is valued more, are we going to spend money to acquire that property, so?
Correct, and we haven't gotten anywhere near that. Uh, the mayor wanted to bring it forth.
If it's of interest, then we'll, we'll go to the next step, which is at least get a preliminary uh, appraisal. Come back and say, okay, here's kind of where we're at.
Um, yeah, I think that's the first step, so we know where we. Okay, you know.
Go figure it out.
I mean, so, well, what's, are we funded on that bike path, are we? Because that's not, I've been on the one in Seminole County, I've ridden it many times, so it's not just a passive park, there's, you, you have to build certain paths, you have to design it, create it, there's boards and things like that you ride on, it has to be engineered in some capacity. So this isn't exclusively just a passive ride through the woods, it's, it's a pretty aggressive, they're fun and cool if they're done right. Do we have the money for it, are we planning it, what's the timeline? And with Akowee Apopka widening, how does that impact us?
Yeah, I'd say we're at the very initial phases of this, which is why the discussion is starting with the mayor, trying to see if there's interest to to expand the footprint. Um, and then the next steps will be going to visit some of these other parks that that do this type of stuff and and talking with some of these groups that that have constructed these and helped maintain these.
So, okay.
But this is, we're still exploring that side of it. The land does though, the the land that the city currently has does lend itself to this type of activity.
Sure. I I completely understand that.
Yeah.
It it's, to everyone's point, there, we need a lot more information, that's fine. I just hate spending money on appraisals, a couple thousand dollars to if we're not going to do this, so I just don't want to waste money on appraisals if we're not going to get to where we need to get. You know, or if we don't have the appetite to do this. Or a plan and funding and things like that, I don't want this to be pie in the sky and we just own more land and swapped it. Because most likely what this, the Harmon Road property is going to turn into is a multifamily project. Most likely, and then the one we're getting is zoned for self-storage. So it it, there's definitely a value difference there. And again, are we going to use it and it's actually going to be benefit to our residents and bring people in? I'm all for it, if we're just going to let it sit there, then we need to pass on this.
So I'm, I'm just looking for, go to the next step or or not?
Hmm, would it be, um, I'd really have to go and look at the property, I can't really, because um, I can't even imagine it right now, you don't have anything to show.
You only, I, won't we come back with a presentation next, the next meeting then, would that be? Okay, all right. Okay.
Do you know how much use the one in?
Oh, it's.
It's packed, it's packed, I'll get that information too for the, for the presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know what we forgot to mention, we have the tree climbers that can't believe what this whole week.
Okay, thank you, Riley. Okay, so we will, uh, we'll come back next meeting with a little presentation on that, okay? Um, and then the last thing I just wanted to, I wanted a big thank you for One Family and First Baptist and First Presbyterian Church for uh, last week, they uh, had three nights where they were feeding uh, and and housing the homeless, you know, during those cold nights, so I wanted to thank, you know, big shout out. They were fed well, both dinner and breakfast and uh, so it was a, it was a collaborative effort between the the three churches and their, some of their parishioners, so.
Do you know how many unhoused they were able to serve?
It was first night.
Seventeen, first night.
Thirteen, thirteen, like eleven and seven or something, eight, yeah. Yeah, something like that, yeah. I think some of them were were taken over to uh, Matthew's Hope, so anyway. Okay, and that's it.
Uh, Mayor, just to confirm, you're going to be instructing IT Director to Rob Hibbler to shut down public comment live feed?
Yes.
Okay, well, residents, if you want to hop on over to my Facebook page, Nick Nesta, City of Apopka, seat four, I will be live streaming the public comments and uh, then I'll need five, a few minutes so we can take a quick break to have me set up.